All right, we've got 5:30. Everyone can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone who's here tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you to anyone who's online, listening in. We appreciate you jumping in and listening there. First, before we get started, I will ask the board if someone could please make a motion to excuse Mike from tonight's meeting. We will kind of get some of the admin stuff out of the way there.
I move to excuse Mike Connors from tonight's meeting.
Perfect. Patty? Roll call vote when you...
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gliddhale?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, what if we didn't vote yes?
Yeah, what happens?
What happens?
Unexcused absence, like speak like this?
Yeah, is it unexcused?
Good question. I'll find an answer and get back to you.
Yeah.
I guess I don't know.
You'll have an in-school suspension?
I have the answer then.
Oh crap, now we're at 5% of disciplinary action.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion as well. I'd like to make a motion that we reorganize the agenda slightly, that we moved unfinished business up above reports and discussions. And if it even be appropriate, I would actually like to have the Initiative 2081 Parental Rights and immediately following have the unfinished business policy 3211. So I'd like to make that motion.
So you're asking, so I understand, so you're asking to move unfinished business policy to be four reports and discussions?
With the exception of the Initiative 2180 or 2081 Parental Rights. So I'd like to have the discussion on parental rights and then immediately go into the policy, then have the remaining three reports.
Okay. Let... Okay, so there's an amendment to the agenda. So I will take the roll call...
Can I just make sure I understand? So you're saying after the superintendent board report, we'll only do the Initiative 2081 reports and discussion?
Yep.
Then we'll skip to unfinished business and then return back to...
And then finish the reports.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, yeah, parents' rights initiative, unfinished business, and then into reports and discussions. So we've got...
That's why a lot of people are here.
Yeah, that would be courteous.
Patty, we'll go ahead and call for the roll call vote unless there's any other discussion.
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gliddhale?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the agenda has been amended. All right. Next up, we will jump into special recognition, certificated employees. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, well, it is Certificated Employees Week. So this week every year, we take just a moment to thank and recognize all of the awesome certificated employees we have here in our district. And just for everyone's information, when we say certificated, staff members are certificated employees. That includes our teachers, classroom teachers, counselors, specialists who work in our schools, librarians, our substitute teachers, nurses, and administrators. So this is our opportunity to give them a big thank you. It's our tradition every year to deliver cakes. So cabinet members and I and other members of the leadership team, first thing this morning, met up and delivered cakes to our schools, and we hope that they enjoyed those cakes. We also, you'll see some social media posts and other things throughout the week recognizing staff. And typically, there's a governor's proclamation, and we couldn't put our hands on it this year, but I, we do have a presidential proclamation, so I want to read a portion of that tonight in recognition of our certificated staff and just share a few pictures as we go. So this is a proclamation on National Teacher Appreciation Day and National Teacher Appreciation Week 2024. This is from President of the United States. Teachers are the heart and soul of our nation. They care for our nation's students, pass on knowledge to rising generations, and inspire our children to dream up new possibilities for their futures. The power of a great teacher is profound. And on National Teacher Appreciation Day and during National Teacher Appreciation Week, we thank them for their tireless efforts and recommit to taking care of our teachers just as they have taken care of all of us. The first lady has reminded me over the years that teachers, that for teachers, teaching is more than just what they do, it's who they are. That sense of purpose powers our nation's teachers every day, even through the long hours they spend setting up classrooms, preparing lesson plans, and educating our future leaders. I have had the honor of meeting so many of our nation's great teachers who have poured their hearts into caring for their students, not only by educating them, but by motivating and inspiring them. Teachers hold the kite strings that keep our nation's ambitions aloft. The future of our nation is in their hands. Today in this week, may we all show them the gratitude they deserve. We will always have their backs. Now therefore, I, Joseph R. Biden Jr., President of the United States of America, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2024 as National Teacher Appreciation Day and May 6 through May 10, 2024, as National Teacher Appreciation Week. A call upon all Americans to recognize the hard work and dedication of our nation's teachers and to observe this day and this week by supporting teachers through appropriate activities, events, and programs. So here in our district, again, we celebrate all certificated staff during this week, and we thank them for all they do for our kids. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Dr. Pierce, did I hear, did Jimmy John's deliver sandwiches to all the schools? Did I hear that? You know?
I don't know that. That'd be awesome. If they did, I don't know, I have not heard that.
All right. I thought I heard that today, but if they did, thank you.
Cake! They got cake, I know that.
All right. All right, next up, we will go into communication from parents, staff, and district residents. The Kennewick School Board, the Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and to learn. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember that your words have impact, and you and not the school district are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of your legal effects of your remarks, you should seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. Guidelines for addressing the board. When you are called, please come to the podium at the front of the room. You will have two minutes to address the board. A stop line will appear on the screen letting you know when to begin, when you have a minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. Do we have one?
I think there was one.
Rachel LeBout.
Yep, let's, yep, let's do that, please.
Yes.
All right, you're good to go.
All right, thank you. Hi. I have to say that I'm truly feeling a little helpless every time I watch these meetings. The board seems to clash quite a bit with some doing their very best to stop opportunities from being available to students and families that may benefit drastically. Can we please pilot the SDL curriculum for six or eight? We're on our way to good results, but that means that we need to keep going. Every student deserves the opportunity to learn about how to have boundaries, think for themselves, develop coping mechanisms for stress, anxiety, and depression. Plus, if parents are notified ahead of time, you don't have to worry about your child seeing or hearing something you don't want them to. But let parents be the ones to make that decision for their own students. You keep saying parents aren't being referred to enough in the curriculum, while I think that letting the parents decide is a good start. I'm glad to hear that you'll be presenting on parental rights. Do not forget that there are student privacy protections in place called FERPA that do not allow any school employee to divulge confidential information, which is different from the information parents have the right to see. At the age of 13, adolescents can seek mental and reproductive health care on their own without having to tell their parents. While I agree that the early stages of curiosity that could be upsetting to the school and home environment should be brought up, it is another thing to enforce, teachers telling parents about kids 13 or above to decisions to be called a different name, identify as another gender. Mallory is correct when she says that this usually ends badly. I'll even go as far to tell you that you and I may actually agree more on the subject personally than you might think. However, it's not up to me or you to decide how an adolescent tells their parent. I urge you to tread carefully, Tri-Cities houses a large number of LGBTQ, and we would not want them to think that the policy is being changed in any way that jeopardizes the confidentiality and safety of our students. And last, please remember Mallory is a human being with feelings and real experiences and knows more than you about what goes on at our schools these days. That's why she's here, to advise you the way that you advise us. She's your equal at that desk, and you should treat her as such. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. About a month ago, I came and introduced myself, and I just came back to touch base. After finishing my career as a teacher, curriculum director, elementary and high school principal, Wayne Smith, a generous and proud Kennewick citizen, became very interested in what I was doing with 50 low-income, struggling students in the Edmonds School District. They also were middle school students. That's where we should be focusing a lot of our attention. With them, we figured out what needed to be present for student academic success as they went through middle school and then through high school. 100% graduated from high school, and all but four went on to post-secondary. All of what we learned is built into our now academic success learning labs, and we now have scaled it up from 50 students to over 260 entering sixth-grade students in a year. Going to the promised land, Wayne left money with Three Rivers Foundation under my direction to make an impact on Kennewick children. It only makes sense that I work through the schools. I would like to offer my support and see if this support at the middle school level is needed and if it's wanted, and if not, what I can do to help the academic well-being of students. I owe that to Wayne Smith. That is why I'm here. I will be meeting with Superintendent Tracy Pierce tomorrow to share more of what it is and to get her input on district needs. I would like to give you a packet so you can look over what Learning Labs is all about. I have summarized on paper the total program, its benefits, and a summary of its different parts. We are Academic Link Outreach, a nonprofit. We bring the money, and it's, we just want to start getting it in with schools and with students. We want to teach all students to have hope, resiliency, self-advocacy, and above all, believing in themselves to become the best that they can be. Thank you, and if you ever want to talk to me, just call Tracy, and she can get ahold of me.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Dave Bowman? Sorry if I... Baumann. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Been kind of following, watching your guys', you know, school board reading and stuff, and I just, I have to say some stuff to you. So my wife and I left Kennewick School District the year after COVID, enrolled our girls at Calvary Christian School. Our girls needed a normal school curriculum that put their learning first. We have never been more convinced it was the right decision when the CRT, gender-neutral bathrooms, parents not having full rights to their child's education, and the political, pardon, BS of gender came around where you can be whatever you want to be. We would like to send our kids back to KSD one day because our, their friends go there. Quite frankly, we're scared to send our kids back there. Reasons being CRT should not be taught at all. It's a political agenda to cause racism and hatred. A child is not born racist. No child is born with less rights, no matter the skin color. We all have an equal opportunities to succeed in life. I know you say you won't teach certain principles of it, but why do you feel you need to teach any of it? Why don't you teach how MLK fought for equal rights and not how because my kids were born white, they're suppressing some other kids somehow of a different skin color? We need to teach the kids to look at human life and not, and not what's only on the outside. On the gender stuff, it's pretty black and white, in my opinion. If you're a boy, you're a boy. If you're a girl, you're a girl. There's no gray area. Stop confusing kids whose minds are so impressionable at a young age. I don't need my kids coming home saying Sally wants to be a boy, and the teacher said it's okay. If anything, you guys should be contacting the parents who should have rights with their children in school, along with the counselor. And why should you be allowed to shape my child's future other than teaching them mathematics, science, history, language? And I guess on the bathroom thing, that's a full stop, in my opinion. Boy doesn't belong in the girl's bathroom, girls don't belong in the boy's bathrooms. Don't take away the innocence of a child with that confusion. It's also not morally right, and we all know what right from wrong is, whether you want to believe it or not. We have many people in our neighborhood, including our neighbors, who send their kids to private school because of these issues. I don't like spending 15 grand a year to send my kids to Calvary Christian. I mean, I love that they have that, that option and we're able to afford it, but, you know, they have values that the Kennewick School District should be imposing as well in protecting my kids instead of catering to the 2% that feel whatever they feel. I don't even know how to describe that. We won't be sending our kids back to Kennewick School District unless policies are in place that are morally sound. It frustrates me that I pay taxes that funds a school district, I get to vote on levies that have really no bearing on my children.
Mr. Bowman, your time has expired.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next up, we have Elena Gamboa.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. I am here representing a group of parents from our elementary school, and I've signed, have this signed on their behalf. Sorry. So I am here to ask for help. Fuerza Elementary in partnership with ESD 123 has provided an essential free after-school program that benefited 100 kids in our school last year. And due to funding, then that number was reduced to 60 this year and will be completely gone next year. We are one of 15 other elementary and middle schools in the Tri-Cities that have lost this valuable resource. This program has been invaluable to my family and many others by eliminating the need to make difficult decisions between essential expenses and after-school care. We as a collective, meaning all the parents that signed this form, are willing to put the work to get the resources to the school, and maybe Wayne Smith is one of them, but need the district's support to reach to the right stakeholders. We're not certain, we're flying in the dark. And any help this body can provide to our school and community, or our school community is greatly appreciated. Thank you, and I'm willing to leave this if you guys need it.
Yeah, does it have like information on it? Or we can reach out?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, we can actually... What program are you referring to?
So the program that, that's currently in partnership with ESD 2023 is 21st Century. And not only do they provide, like, again, a wonderful program for the working parents that are in that happy medium, make enough to support their families, but not enough to maybe pay for health insurance and after-school care that's very expensive. Our kids, you know, they receive support with homework, they, my time has ended. But really, it's a great, great nurturing program that provides so many social and developmental benefits to our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna take a look. Next up is Tina Gregory.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you all. I think the voters spoke loud and clear this last election, and I just thank you all for doing the hard work that you've been doing, and I appreciate helping us with the CRT. And as I listen to the parents here that send their kid to Calvary, that's how it is with a lot of us taxpaying people, you know? We homeschool and send to private schools because of the fear of what is taught in public school. And I just want to stand here firm against allowing boys into girls' locker rooms and on sports, and the same with girls going into boys' locker rooms. And I understand that these children are confused, but we need to put the safety of our children first. And I'd like us to step back into teaching academics instead of all this stuff that confuses our children so much, and come alongside these children and help them instead of, it is a small percent, like this gentleman said, 2%. That's, that is what the real thing is. And I would like for you to start, you know, thinking of that when you're making these different decisions, and along with parental rights. It's insane what our government has done and allow our children to transition, and we don't even know what kind of game we like to play, let alone changing our sex. And I just pray that each one of you will really take this serious and stand up for our children like you have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, Jesus, for every one of you on this board. I am so blessed to see all of you on this board. And I just want to say thank you for supporting the majority of the parents that actually care for protecting their children. I want to say thank you for arming our schools because that is a high priority to protect our children. And I want to say thank you for not supporting the CRT in our schools and cleaning up our school curriculums. I want to say thank you again for choosing to do the right thing for the majority, and we all support you, we the people, in saying no to letting boys in girls' bathrooms or locker rooms or in their sports. The same goes for letting girls into boys' bathrooms or their locker rooms or into their sports. And so I just want to say thank you for supporting the good morals that helps everyone.
All right, next up, Oscar Boyce.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. Similar concerns I have as a grandparent of kids in the Kennewick School District and other parts of the state of Washington. Boys in girls' locker rooms, we are against. I've discussed this with my wife, we feel like the key issue probably is safety. Mental, physical, and emotional health of these policies are, long-term, are unknown. Early mental development, which all of our students qualify K through 12, fall into that category. Just one bad experience can affect them. I, as an adult, I watched the aftermath of children that were abused in their teens, and they seemed to have normal, early adult lives, and then they crashed around age 40. It was a tragedy to watch. So I know that these early developmental issues are more serious than we can possibly imagine, and the long-term effects are still relatively unknown to these policies. Our kids, my granddaughters, my grandson, need a protected space. Our grand, our children all need the safety in their, in the locker rooms and the bathrooms. And I've also observed the science of gender-affirming care is changing. Some countries have backed way off on some of these things that they thought were appropriate. Turned out, there's no science behind them. So I know I sound like a broken record, and I'm grateful for some of the speakers performing that approach these topics in a, in a good and proper way. I am so convinced that these policies need to be analyzed for a far longer period of time than, rather than being sucked up as the popular notion of how we should handle this gender-affirming care, for lack of a better term. In my youth, I also noticed Title IX came down, and programs changed, and I feel like 50 years of that Title IX efforts to keep girls on the same footing in their athletics are down the drain. So appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Annette Rose.
Hi, all. First, I want to say thank you for being here, for stepping up and serving our schools and our communities, and we really do appreciate all that you're doing. My question to you is, are you being influenced and voting for policies based on emails you're receiving and public comments made at the board meetings? And if that is the case, do we need to ramp up our efforts and also pledge our inboxes with emails from the other side? I think we voted for you four specifically that are sitting here today based on what we knew about you and your values. The expectation is that you will vote on policies with those values in mind. I was disappointed in the vote made by the board at the last board meeting regarding this CRT policy. I plead with you that in the future, you will work together in passing policies and procedures that will give our students the opportunity to be the best they can be and give them a safe space at school. I would also like to make a plug for looking into a trimester system for our high schools, allowing them to receive more credits. And if we could think outside of the box and find a workaround for this boys' and girls' bathrooms, there has to be a way that we can follow state law and somehow still keep them separated. So I urge you to think outside of the box and get creative, and let's see what we can do to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Catherine Schroeder.
Good evening, Dr. Pierce and Board Directors. I'm a resident in the Kennewick District. I have two grandchildren who attend school in the district, and I'm a retired social worker. And I'd like to address two issues that have been in discussion at recent school board meetings. My concern is the intersection between the district's gender-inclusive schools policy and procedures, and the need for continued mental health therapists and supports in our schools. As you know, we have a moment in our country in which the culture wars around LGBTQ plus identity and expression have been brought into our schools, including our own district. And we know that all students are affected by these debates and policies, LGBTQ youth in particular, who learn that their identities are up for debate, are not valued or welcomed by some. Some students are concerned about their LGBTQ friends, and other students are learning that it's okay to single out those who are nonconforming for discrimination, exclusion, or harassment. The Trevor Project is a national organization and resource whose mission is to end LGBTQ youth suicide. The Trevor Project surveyed youth in 2022 with responses from 28,000 young people ages 13 to 24, and nearly 2/3 of those respondents said that hearing about potential state and local bans on classroom discussion about LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus people made their mental health worse. According to the Center for Disease Control, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for our middle-school-aged children ages 10 to 14. for our middle-school-aged children ages 10 to 14, and suicide is the third-leading cause of death for our 15- to 25-year-olds, our high school students. LGBTQ young people are more than four times more likely to attempt suicide than students who are not LGBTQ identified, identified, excuse me. Creating school procedures that set aside a particular group of students for special identification, action, and intervention would create a process that may prove traumatic, frightening, or anxiety-producing for a student who's exploring their identity and looking to their schools to be a safe place to be themselves. I encourage the board to remember that actions taken by the board affect not only your own students, neighbors, and friends, but children and youth throughout the city that you've never met, whose lives you know nothing about. I urge you to carefully consider all our children as you navigate your responsibility to create a safe and nondiscriminatory school environment for all our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. All right. Next up, Becky Elias.
Hi, I'm Becky Elias, and I've got some of our little loboses from Huarez Elementary School here with me.
Pretty cute.
I actually hadn't planned on speaking tonight. I was just here to support Elena, talking about 21st Century. But as I came running here from work, desperately trying to make it in time, I realized that there's a lot of parents that can't be here tonight because they're busy working still. So I just wanted to have a second to speak for them. 21st Century has just been an amazing program for the kids. It provides them a safe atmosphere, and they continue their education and tutoring and fun and games, and all sorts of stuff while they're there. It also lets me go to work, and I don't have any thoughts between when school ends and when I pick my mom up, because I know that she's there, she's safe, and she's learning and having fun. There's a lot of parents that if they don't have some kind of free or reduced after-school program, their kids will get on a bus and they will go home to an empty house. And it's, that's a very terrifying thought for a lot of parents. Most of us will be able to swing something and figure it out, but there are parents that won't be able to. So if there's anything that can be done to help us try to figure out funding or something for our kids for after-school, it would be greatly appreciated. And I think these two girls might want to say what they like most about 21st Century after-school program.
You can pull the microphone down. You can take it off. You can pop it off, yeah.
What do you guys like about 21st Century?
That we each get to, to have fun, and we get to make more and more friends every single day. I like to, like, play a lot in, like, 21st Century, like, and do, like, lots of crafts and arts out there.
Do you guys like your teachers there?
Yeah.
Yes.
They help you?
Yes.
I just got the microphone.
We each like to make friends every single day, and if we keep on doing 21st Century, the more friends we can make.
You guys did great. That was great.
Good job, ladies.
Thanks, ladies.
Very proud of you.
These are some good ones. Good choice.
Thank you.
I don't think those kids can get any cuter.
All right. Next.
It just makes me fat.
Next up, Maria... May, Maynes? Sorry.
I'm Maria, I'll make some Spanish, so I'm going to help by translating.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Soy madre de uno de los estudiantes de Fuerza.
I'm a mother of one of the students at Fuerza.
Y estoy aquí para pedirles que por favor...
And I am here to please ask and beg...
Sigan apoyando el programa después de escuela 21st Century.
To please continue to support the after-school program, 21st Century.
Porque, por ejemplo, como en mi caso, verdad, que no contamos con muchos recursos para poder pagar programas después de escuela.
Because in cases like mine, like my family's, where we don't have enough resources to pay for an after-school program.
Y también pues, yo trabajo, y este programa no solamente ha beneficiado a mi hijo de desarrollarse académicamente.
I work, and not only has this program helped my child to continue his development educationally...
También crear para ellos un ambiente más seguro.
It has also fostered a safe, a safe environment.
Pues como, como repito, verdad, ya que uno trabaja, pues no tiene los recursos para pagar una babysitter.
And again, you know, I know that I sound like a broken record, but I don't have resources, even though I work, to pay for a babysitter.
Y también pues, como en el caso de mis hijos, que este programa pues los ha ayudado a los tres, y al más pequeño ahorita pues le ha ayudado bastante con sus tareas.
And in my case, this program has helped all three of my children, and the youngest, he has benefited the most with additional help with homework.
Y también pues esto para nosotros es un gran beneficio, ya que muchas familias, verdad, como repito, no cortamos con esos recursos, y me gustaría que por favor siguieran apoyando este programa.
And again, I, I know I sound like a broken record, but a lot of families like mine truly do not count with the resources to pay for these programs, and I am here to ask that you please continue to support programs like this one.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias, Maria, por tus palabras.
Next up, we have Karen Madsen.
Hi. Thank you so much for all that you guys do to serve on our school board. I know this is not an easy one, so... And I've talked to some of you guys on the phone, or I've emailed, and I just wanted to, I guess, share again in this forum. I'm really concerned with the direction that our schools are going. I have raised four of my children, all have gone through the Kennewick School District. My last one is a freshman, a Kumaiken. And some of the things that she comes home and tells me of how the school is and things that they're having to deal with in school regarding the gender inclusion policy and things that are going on with that are really concerning to me. I've read through the policy that we have now, and I understand that there's a proposal that's coming forward to try to support parental transparency. Because if my daughter was going through something like that, I would, as a parent, would want to be included in that discussion with the school, with however I could to help her. And I imagine there's a lot of, well, I know there's a lot of other parents that feel the same way as I do. I have learned in talking to you guys that there are some things in the, in the policy that our state law that, you know, as of right now, we can't do a whole lot about. I, you know, the restroom thing concerns me, the locker room thing concerns me. I really do not want curriculum taught that is going to introduce confusing issues to, especially young kids, who would not on their own think of these type of things to the, you know, they could be a cat, identify, you know? Some, and those things are so distracting. Like, my daughter has said, it's ridiculous, some of the things that she has to deal with in these kids that, you know, identify that way. And then to have kids get disciplined because they don't go along with what those, you know, they're identifying as. Like, I can understand, I appreciate that nobody wants to feel ostracized, nobody wants to feel that they're being singled out, or bullied, or any of that kind of stuff. And I, I agree that we should love and include and support as much as we can, but I also don't feel like people should be forced to go along with, you know, something that they, they don't agree with. And, and I just hope that you guys will push for keeping parental rights, for transparency, for keeping, you know, morals in our, in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our communication from parent, staff, and district president. We will move into consent items. So at this time, I will take the motion to approve consent items.
I move to approve the consent items as presented.
No discussion at all? Patty, go for the roll call vote, please.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gludhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Just a quick note, we do encourage you guys to stick around, because we're going to talk about the policy in here in a few minutes.
Okay, perfect. So we will move into communication, follow-up, and I will start. Dr. Pierce?
Thank you, yes. And I apologize in advance for my coughing. I do have cough drops and water, and I'm trying to not cough as I can, but... So I wanted to provide a little follow-up, because there have been some comments and questions about the public comment portion of the board meeting, and so I wanted to follow up on that topic. So the Open Public Meetings Act, or the OPMA, requires boards to allow public comment at or before every regular meeting at which final action is taken unless there is an emergency. And the OPMA encourages boards to incorporate and accept public comment even when not required by law. In addition to the OPMA, there are other state statutes that require boards to offer the opportunity for public comment before adopting written policies that promote the education of K-12 students, who will promote the effective, efficient, or safe management and operation of the district. So just a little bit of background, in our board, as you know, offers public comment at every regular board business meeting, whether there's the, you know, just reports with no action, or there's action being taken. So this time at public comment is really a comment period rather than a period of back-and-forth dialogue. And so that's why at each meeting, the board president reads the guidelines to ensure that people don't expect the board to respond to questions or comments, or to expect a dialogue with the board at that time. Sometimes during public comment, people might pose a question or frame a comment in a manner in which it appears they're expecting a response from the board. So the guidelines are read at the beginning of every meeting to ensure that everyone, whether it's the person making the comment, or someone listening from the audience or at home, understands that there won't be a back-and-forth during, during the meeting. However, during other, another portion of the meeting, so one question that's come up is whether the board or the superintendent can allude to or make a comment about a comment that was made. So there are times where board members, or I may refer to something that was raised during public comment, and there's no prohibition against doing so. So again, the guidelines are read to help everyone understand that in that moment, there's not a back-and-forth dialogue. And, but that doesn't mean that there won't be a comment made about a comment in the context of some other board member report, or in the context of a report being made by staff. And, and I have shared with members of the community, and I know that the board has too, that you truly value hearing from the community, whether that's during the meetings or over email. And while those kinds of, well, public comment especially is a one-way communication to the board, there's certainly an opportunity for members of the public to reach out to individual board members, to request meetings, to have a back-and-forth dialogue, to have a conversation about topics, you know, pertaining, pertaining to the district. Board members represent the public, you were elected by the public, and up to two board members can at any time, where, you know, it's mutually convenient, meet with a member of the community or a group from the community, and it's absolutely within your right to do that. So if there's members of the community seeking that kind of back-and-forth dialogue, the best way to do that is to reach out to individual board members and see if you can set up a meeting. It is important to note, though, that three or more board members cannot hold a meeting unless it's properly posted and communicated as a board meeting, because otherwise it's a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. But two, one board member or two board members, absolutely fine. So I just wanted to provide some clarity, because I know there's been a couple questions that have arisen about public comment.
Thank you. I do have one follow-up item regarding last, our last meeting. When it comes to the official record for voting, we took Mike's votes last meeting, basically written as he, he left. It's been brought to my attention that we have Board Policy 1430, which says essentially, "Every board member present shall vote." And so for the board and the community, just so you understand, going forward, board members who are present or phone in, their, their vote will be official record. So we, we had changed the minutes to reflect that, and that's what we just essentially voted on. However, it doesn't change anything from the last meeting, nothing's switched. I, I just want to ensure and share with the board that for our vote to count officially on record, we have to be present or on the phone. We can't email in our vote, we can't write it down and anything like that. So I just wanted to share that, and we'll, we'll take care of that going forward. All right, so next up, we are going to move along to superintendent and board member reports. Valerie, would you like to start?
Great. I don't have too much today. I unfortunately had to miss the last student advisory council meeting, because I just had a test, I couldn't reschedule. So props to Annie for the notes, this is all her. So correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Pierce, because she was there, but they discussed the next meeting, which is May 22nd, which is our final meeting. We're inviting the new students that are joining the advisory council, so they'll get to know a little bit more about their role before they step into it next year. So I believe the meeting was mostly just how, planning how, like, we're going to structure that meeting for them coming in, so it's welcoming and informational, things like that. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Valerie. Dr. Pierce?
Okay, since our last board meeting, I've visited Hawthorne and Cascade and MCP, Kedawakai, Amistad, Ridgeview, South Gate, and Highlands today. So, yeah, so there's lots of great things happening in our schools, of course. State testing's happening right now, and, and also all sorts of great other events. As we're gearing up for the end of school, there's still strong instruction happening in our schools, and students are engaged, and so we, you know, we're kind of starting that countdown, but there's lots of instructional time left that's been really well-used. So appreciate the efforts of our staff as we approach the final stretch here of the school year. I wanted to highlight the community event, or one community event that was last week, and that was the HAP Awards. It's the Hispanic Academic Achievers Program Awards. And so every year, HAP recognizes and provides scholarships to students, and so our district is there, along with neighboring districts, and we had many, many students being awarded scholarships. There's great pictures on social media, and students even recognized for their efforts who will be potential future scholarship winners. I also wanted to announce that we completed the hiring, the interview and hiring process for our new Assistant Superintendent of Operations. And this new position, as you know, is a restructuring of the Associate Superintendent of HR position, which is currently vacant, and the Executive Director of Business Services position. So putting those things together, that, of course, is Vic's current position. We know Vic's retiring later in the fall. And so tonight, with the passage of the consent agenda, the board officially approved the hire of Dr. Thomas Brilhart. And so tomorrow, we'll send out a formal communication to, to staff and the community introducing Dr. Brilhart. We're very excited for him to be joining our district from Indiana, and he'll be starting in July. And I know he and his family are actually here, looking at houses and getting ready to make their big move. So we're excited to, to be welcoming him to the district.
Thank you so much. Dr. Miller?
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all the parents that came today and took the time to vote. Also, I want to tell all the teachers, thank you so much. This is Appreciation Week for them, and my, I grew up, my mother was a teacher. And my, I grew up, my mother was a teacher. My mom probably has impacted my life more than just about anyone in the world. And she's an amazing teacher. She's an amazing mother. And I appreciate all the wonderful teachers I've had. And I'm sure many of us will feel the same way. They've had a dramatic impact on our lives. So thank you to them. You know, to the parents that spoke today, I heard a lot of concerns, and I echo a lot of those same concerns. It's what actually motivated me to be on the school board. In truth, one of the frustrating things about being on the school board is, is we are limited in our power of what we're able to do. I echo a lot of the same concerns about privacy. The state, though, has made laws that have basically sacrificed the well-being, privacy, and safety of our children, who are biologic sex, I guess we can call it, discriminating for a group that is, they've determined is special and should have special privilege. I find that highly disturbing. I think that all of our students should be given the same right to privacy, the same right to safety. As I've said before, as a sports orthopedic surgeon, I have significant safety concerns about having young men, physiologic young men, competing against women in sports, particularly sports like girls soccer. Girls soccer has, is one of the, has some of the most injuries of any sport. And then to add a biologic male into that, it's a recipe for disaster. And so I have significant concerns. I echo the concerns that you guys expressed. Unfortunately, we are limited by state law. We have to obey the law and uphold the law. So as we form these policies, we're trying to do our best to provide for the safety while complying with law. But I want to echo, I have very similar concerns. One of the things I would recommend is, is that you reach out to your legislature, the legislative groups and people here in the area. They're the people that can make laws and change laws. And unfortunately, that's not in our power. So I wanted to echo those concerns. Also, I received emails from different people about the policy last meeting regarding the critical race theory. One of the things I think is really important is, is I want to be as, I want to share with people why I make the decisions I do. So that everyone here is clearly, or anyone in the community who wants to know how I came to my decision and how I came to my conclusion, I will try to be as transparent about that as possible. The reason why I voted the way I did, as I expressed in the last meeting, was is the functional and policy change in the policy didn't change, really functionally didn't change anything. We were simply looking to put the words "critical race theory" in. My concern was, is we don't have a uniform definition. Even amongst the general populace, there's no consensus of what critical race theory represents. And when we don't have a universal definition that everyone can accept, it creates the opportunity for a lot of confusion and a lot of contention. And one of the things for me that I think we can put in the policy exactly what it is we don't want taught specifically, and that's what we have. We have in the policy specific things we don't want taught, which would include what most people would consider critical race theory. Simply because we don't use the word "critical race theory" doesn't change what can be taught. The policy is still there to protect us against some of the things expressed, because I echo those same concerns. But that was why I voted the way I did, is because I felt like, look, we don't need an ambiguous or nebulous term that actually may water down what we're trying to do and make it more confusing, or just create unnecessary contention and conflict. Final thing I wanted to bring up was, I wanted to bring up that, something that Dr. Pierce brought up, and that is, is I am open to dialogue. Often, people come up and they express wanting to feel heard. I want everyone to know that I take public comment seriously. I've read the emails that people send me, and I appreciate their input. Simply because I don't agree with you doesn't mean that I don't hear you. I hear you. I do. And I appreciate your opinions. And I'm more than happy to have an open dialogue. And if you'd like to share your reasoning and how you came to your conclusion, I'm open to hear that as well, especially if it's a civil and appropriate dialogue. My email is always available. I'm usually here 15, 20 minutes before the meeting starts, and I'm always willing to stay 15 to 20 minutes after the meeting, if not more. I'll stay till you're done talking, because I want people to know that I'm available. In my business practice, it's one of the things I always try to do, is be available to my patients. And I feel like, as a board member, you deserve that same thing from me. So I'm available. I'm happy to have a dialogue, and I'm happy to hear your opinion. And I'm open, and if someone gives me new evidence or things I haven't heard, I'm willing to change. But I do make my decisions based on principles and guiding principles that basically are fundamental to me. That's all I got. That was long.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Brittany, you're up.
Yeah. So thank you so much, everyone, for coming. I can't tell you how much we appreciate hearing from the community. And just thank you. Thank you for coming. Like Dr. Miller expressed, I really can't put it into words adequately how willing I am to put aside time for you. If you want to meet with me, and if you have things you want to discuss, please just reach out to me. You have my email address. What happens is, when you come, I have your first and last name. And I could go and stalk you on Facebook and try to figure out which John Doe you are, and send you a random message and say, hey, let's try to get together. It will be so much more efficient if you just look at the KSD website, find my email address, say, hey, when are you available to get together for an hour? And we will make something happen. And I would love to hear what is on your mind about what's happening in this school district. Unfortunately, the onus is on you to get that started. But I'm so willing to do it, and I have been doing that with those people who have reached out. So please don't hesitate to do that, because the two minutes you get here making public comments really aren't, it's just not the most efficient way to communicate. So please, 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 I'm begging you. If you really, really want to be heard, I'm so willing to do it. I just need you to initiate it. As far as my activity is concerned, for the last couple of weeks, I was able, someone that reached out to me was a member from RESD. So I was able to get together with her, and we had a great conversation, got to know each other a little bit better, and was really an enjoyable experience. I went and did a site visit to Legacy High School and to Endeavor High School with Principal Guy Stot. It was a wonderful visit, really appreciated and loved learning more about Legacy and Endeavor. Great programs we have going on there, and really great things happening. A lot of reshaping going on, and I'm excited to see what happens in the next year or two with Mr. Stott there at the helm. Stot there at the helm. Yeah, it's Stot, but it looks like Stott. So Strot! You guys, this is the second meeting in a row. I've gotten someone's name wrong. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Strot. No, it's not. It is Strot. He told me it rhymes with goat. It's Strot. It rhymes with goat. I know that's right. I was just missing the R. Okay. I was able to attend the orchestra ensemble last week. I have a fifth grader, so that was exciting for me to be there and see what she can grow into as she continues with orchestra. I did attend our school's, my boundary school's morning was with Mom. Our PTO worked hard and had a great event there. And then I also got, I got to meet with Mr. Strot again on Friday and visited Phoenix High School. So he is the principal for our three choice high schools. So he has a big job, and really enjoyed my visit to Phoenix, was impressed with what is happening there, and really impressed with the potential for what that project-based school could be. There's a lot of things about that that I think should be, that that is what academics should be generally. So I would love to see, just have some discussions there, maybe in our subcommittee that Dr. Miller and I are a part of, and just find out what elements of what is happening there at Phoenix. What can we bring into our boundary schools? And how can we bolster that program a little more? Because there's a lot of potential there for some of that student-led learning that I think this generation is just dying for. It's really the direction we need to head. We have bright, intelligent students, and they need to be able to direct where they're going. So anyway, just doing some rethinking on what we can do for the education system. I had a visit to Southgate Elementary with Mr. Joe Jones. That was a wonderful visit. Really loved what I learned about what's happening at Southgate. Mr. Jones is very intentional about making sure that he's supporting his students there. So it was a great visit. And then, like I'm sure the other school board members spent more time this week than I have in the four months or so that I've been a school board member fielding calls and responding to emails, particularly because of the discussion we're going to be having tonight on the gender-inclusive schools policy. And I'm learning, and I understand this, that it's really hard to keep, to be aware of exactly what's discussed at the school board meetings, right? Because we all have busy lives. And if you look just at the minutes, the minutes are just the nuts and bolts about what happens. It does not give you any details about the conversation. So if you see something in the minutes that don't quite make sense, just go to the video and fast-forward to that segment, and you'll find that we rarely have a decision. We rarely make a decision without significant discussion. And so we will always express and explain why we're voting the way we did. And so just for the benefit of those who are in the room tonight, since we have people in attendance, I, like Dr. Miller, support the original policy that we had already for race in the curriculum, which effectively prohibits the teaching of critical race theory. But I felt that adding the words "critical race theory" into the policy were unnecessarily political. That's not a stance that we really needed to take, and it's just as strong of a statement. And actually, for some reasons, I think it might be more so. So just want to clarify that that's the case, because that's actually what I spent a lot of my time doing this week, was clarifying my position on that vote. So that was my position. As far as the gender-inclusive policy, and I'll talk more about this in detail when it's time to have that discussion, but I felt that my discussion the last time was a little impassioned. And I walked away feeling like maybe I wasn't really letting all sides and all perspectives be heard, based on my bias and my own belief. And so I spent some time this week reaching out specifically to a few families that have transgender students. We had great conversations. I walked away from those conversations with information that I knew already, but with the heart of it, and really felt from their perspective what their experience has been. So I'm hoping that in our discussion tonight, that I can reflect some of that, and with our decision-making, we can reflect some of that. So I think that's it.
Great. Thanks, Brittany. Micah?
Okay. I will, let's do this. I've really enjoyed the spring sports a lot this week. Dr. Brillhart, I'm really excited to meet him. That's going to be a very good addition. I talked to a number of staff and people this week who really, really, who have been able to meet him, part of the interview process or something like that. And they just say he's wonderful. They say he was kind of far and away the best candidate. And so I don't know him yet, but really excited to meet him. He sounds really cool. Not intimately familiar with 21st Century. I think they, okay. And then, so I'm looking forward to kind of dive into that and get to understand what that's about. Just want to make sure you know that we heard you there. Gabe and I were also able to visit the transportation and maintenance facility, tour that whole facility, spent a couple hours there, met with, I think, just about everybody in the facility, and it was really, really insightful. Learned a lot of really cool details that we're going to bring back. We've already talked about potential changes in policy and things that we can kind of work on to try to, just continue to improve our district, you know, have that growth mindset of just improving in every regard, in every way. I can tell you, those people that work there are fantastic, just wonderful. I would call them my kind of people, salt of the earth, just really, really, just true, genuine people. I just really, really enjoyed my, our time, my time there. I want to speak for Gabe. I just want to make a couple comments on Josh and Brittany's. I don't want to, you know, go into too much, but I obviously disagree with them on the votes. I would encourage everybody to go back and watch that video on the critical race theory portion, and flesh out those arguments. Last thing is, we do have limited power. And that is a big issue, is that in Olympia, they are constantly making laws, in my opinion, that are not helping our students, that are hurting our students, and they're pushing, I believe that Olympia is pushing politics into our schools constantly. And I would like to stop that from happening. So I just want to encourage the board members, in a minute here, we're going to be discussing this policy that I presented, and I just want to encourage them to have the mindset of, I mean, we can push back as hard as we want, and we will still never even close to becoming neutral, right? Olympia has gone so radical, in my opinion, that I think we need to take every inch that we can to push back, but we do need to stay within the law. And I 100% agree with that, and I want to do that. And you'll hear in our discussion that that's our goal, to stay within the law. But also, we do also need to reclaim, and I say reclaim, every blade of grass that we are losing constantly. So and I don't, and my opinion is, these new laws, although they may have good intentions, they're ultimately not helping kids. And I think that everybody wants to help and support kids. I just don't think this is the right way. So I hope that we can be very, very on the front foot and try to reclaim every bit in this policy that we're going to create today. I think that's all I have. Yeah, my time.
Thank you, Micah. So yes, I visited the transportation and maintenance facility. Great visit. Learned a lot about that process. I've always wondered how that kind of works and what they're dealing with from that perspective. Ultimately, you know, the support outside of the schools, they have a big role in supporting our schools in what they do. And so having that one kind of KSD mindset between those different entities, I suppose, is something I look forward to trying to help, you know, foster and create. Let's see. I met with seven community members last night for almost three hours, had a great discussion about things going on in schools. Some had some real good insight to what's going on in the schools that they're within or their kids are in. So it was great to hear from them. And we're talking about a handful of that stuff tonight, and behavior, attendance, stuff like that. So that'll be, almost like perfect timing. Had a couple of conversations with a few other board presidents throughout the state. It's always good to network and get to know people from different districts and discuss things that are working for them and aren't, and how we can better our district. I will, one thing that came up this week that I'm a little frustrated about is WIAA is voting this week to make flag football a sport, a sanctioned sport, is my understanding. Girls' flag football. Fantastic. Perfect. Let's do it. Where can we get some love for lacrosse? Like, how come lacrosse is not a topic of these sports? Like, we've had lacrosse come in, and they've been very passionate, and we're doing these things to help lacrosse. And almost everybody in East Washington has lacrosse clubs, and then all of a sudden, it's like, hey, the Seahawks are behind the push, and they're like, hey, we've got almost 80 schools over here on the West Side that want to introduce girls' flag football. Great. Let's do it. Somewhat like, let's look at lacrosse at some point, please. And that's big over here, and I know they've already got some stuff going on on the West Side. But one thing I'm going to look into is just seeing how we can try to push lacrosse to the forefront of their mind and figure out what's going on. So throwing it out there in the universe. Anybody who's got any contacts at WIAA or whatever, let's do it. All right. That is all I have. Okay. So we will move on to our amended agenda item, which is Initiative 2081, Parents' Rights. Dr. Pierce, you are up.
Okay. Wanted to take the opportunity tonight to review Initiative 2081, Public School Education Parent Rights. This initiative was passed during the last legislative session in March, and it takes effect in June. For the board, I did put a link to the PDF on the legislative website that includes the full document of the things I'm going to highlight this evening in terms of the updates to RCW. So what you'll see is that this initiative resulted in new sections to RCW 28A 605. And it starts off, I won't obviously read all of the words on all of these slides, but I think this part is important, and it's kind of the preamble to the changes to the state law. And it says, "The legislature finds that," I think I have a little typo here, "that parents," that RCW should be amended to read as follows, "that parents are the primary stakeholders in their children's upbringing, that parental involvement is a significant factor in increasing student achievement, and access to student information encourages grade-." and access to student information encourages greater parental involvement." And when you look at our KSD strategic goals, one of our goals is, is focused on families and family engagement, and seeing families as key partners in their child's education. This is very much in line with our goals as a school district, because we know that, that parent engagement, parent partnership leads to greater student success. So some specific parts, there's really three big sections that are included in, in the RCW, and, and much of this is already in place, okay? But, but now there's this law, you know, specific law to affirm some things that are already in place. So the, the first section speaks to that parents and legal guardians of public school children younger than 18 have all the rights to examine textbooks, curriculum, and supplemental materials. You know that it is part of our curriculum adoption process. There's, there's viewing, there's parent meetings that are held, and all, through all of our processes with IMC, there's opportunities for parents to see all of the curriculum and materials that are used in, in their children's classrooms. There's also their right to inspect the child's public school records. So at any time, parents can ask for a copy of their child's records, and they, they will receive that within 10 business days. It also specifies what's included in a public school record, and so it includes academic records, medical or, or health records. Those would be obviously things like with the nurse's office, if, if a child saw the nurse, or there's a, a health plan, that, that would be something that a parent brings in, like if the child has an allergy of some sort, or that kind of thing. Records of any mental health counseling, records of any vocational counseling, records of discipline, including expulsion and suspension, attendance records, records associated with screening for learning challenges, or individualized education programs, IEPs, anything like that. All of these also individually have parental involvement components. For example, I just want to highlight, Matt tonight is going to talk about attendance and, and discipline as part of his. We notify parents when there's, when there's absences. Parents are absolutely notified if there's any disciplinary action taken against their student. So if, if it's happening in the moment, we're going to notify parents about it. And then, this is clarifying, that parents have access to their child's full records at any time, and these are all the things that are included in the record. I mean, I skipped H, any other student-specific files. And that 20 there is just a little typo. So, so any, any kind of file, pardon me, file or documents that the school is maintaining, parents have rights to those. Okay, the next section is really about notifications that parents have rights to, and, and whether it's like prior notifications. So prior notification, when any medical service is being offered. Now, of course, in schools, you know, we, we don't, we don't provide medical services with the exception of things like a student goes to the nurse's office. Obviously, if there's an emergency happening, we have AEDs in our schools, you know, we're going to do those sorts of things. If there's any, you know, medical treatment that's required, what typically happens is there's, you know, if it's something, an, an emergency, a 911 call is made, and then a call to the parent is made. So any, any kind of medical service that's being provided. Parents have right to receive notification. So it's, it's prior if there's anything being offered, and then notification when anything has been provided. So again, I'm talking about kind of emergency situations. So student, you know, falls on the playground, breaks an arm, those kinds of things. Any notification when the school's arranged directly or indirectly for medical treatment that's results in follow-up care beyond normal school hours. I'm not, you know, I tried to think of an example of, of what that would even look like in practice. Can't really think of anything unless like there was an emergency, emergency situation, and the parent couldn't be contacted, or the emergency contact couldn't be contacted, and, you know, the student had to go to the hospital in an aid car or something. But obviously, you know, parent notification is going to happen right at the moment. It speaks to immediate notification if a criminal action is deemed to have been committed against their child or by their child, to receive immediate notification if law enforcement personnel questions their child. So as you know, we do have school resource officers in our schools. If there is other law enforcement wanting to come in, there's always that immediate notification to parent, except in cases where the parent's being investigated for abuse or neglect. So there's obviously an exception there. I wasn't quite sure about what H would look like in action, immediate notification if the child is taken or removed from the school campus without parental permission. You know, we, we wouldn't allow that to happen. I think if, honestly, on that one, I'm a little, I'm, I'm not quite sure what the situation would be unless it was removal by Child Protective Services or something like that. And then assurance that the child's public school will not discriminate against their child based on sincerely held religious beliefs of the child's family. So much of the policies that we have in place, whether we, we do have policy in place around law enforcement and notification to parents, we have non-discrimination policies in place that protect students for all sorts of reasons, including religious beliefs. So much of this, like I said, we have in place. And now there's real clear law written as well. Now, this part is new, and we need to put some plans in place to implement this part. So this J of the RCW says that parents have the right to receive written notice and the option to opt their child out of any surveys, assignments, questionnaires, role-playing activities, recordings of their child, or other student engagements. So I need you to remember that, other student engagements, especially as we talk about 3211. So that include, so any of those things that include any questions about the child's sexual experiences or attractions, the child's family beliefs, morality, religion, or political affiliations, any mental health or psychological problems of the child or a family member, and all surveys, analyses, and evaluations subject to areas covered by the protection of pupil rights under FERPA, or the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So as I read this, we, we do have already opt-out in place for our, our sexual health curriculum, and that's actually the next section that the RCW speaks to. And we have opt-out of, like, for example, Healthy Youth Survey. If, if there's any kind of survey or assignment like that, you know, those are, those are already in place. But this, sorry about that, this Section J really speaks to any other student engagements. So that could be a conversation between a student and a therapist, or a student and a counselor, or a student, or an administrator. I, I interpret that as a student engagement. So there's a right to opt out of any of that. So I'll come back to that at the end when we talk about next steps. Okay, then I, I mentioned K, we, we have that in place to receive written notice and have the option to opt their child out of instruction on topics associated with sexual activity. So the only kind of instruction on topics associated with sexual activity per policy would be in the context of health curriculum, and parents can opt out of that. And we have a very, I think we, we are very communicative about the processes for opting out of that, and have a really good process in place. Sections L, M, and O, our L is about the right to receive the annual school calendar. It can be on the website, and, and, and we do, we meet that requirement. The right to receive a listing of any required fee and its purpose and use. So that's one that I want to follow up on and make sure that we have in place. Right to receive in writing a description of the school's dress code. We've got clear policy and procedure on dress code, and that is all included in the student handbook. And so we'll make sure that, you know, all of these things are communicated. I think we're already meeting N. And then to be informed of their child's academic performance. I am going to bring an updated grading policy kind of connected to this at the next board meeting. This really speaks especially to ensuring that parents know if the, if their child's progress, academic performance, is such that it could threaten the child's ability to be promoted to the next grade level. Obviously, we want to make sure that parents are always informed of their child's academic performance. We use online grading systems, especially at the secondary schools. And so we want to make sure that, you know, those things are updated, and parents are always in, aware of their child's progress. So then the final sec, final sections three and four speaks to that public schools shall not be required to release any records or information regarding medical or health records or mental health counseling records to a parent during the penancy of an investigation of child abuse or neglect conducted by law enforcement agencies. So there's a caveat there and a kind of safety valve for, for, for students. And, and then the definition of public school. So this is really the entire RCW, updated RCW language, that you can see the full document, and I pretty much just copied and pasted into these slides. So for our next steps is, we need to develop a good communication plan to building administrators and to families. So there's, you know, widespread awareness of, of this new law, and we need to create this opt-out form to address the requirements of Section J. Because we don't right now have, we, we have opt-out forms for things, so it's not dissimilar to the media release and directory information form that parents get at the beginning of every year that says, I want to, if you, if you want to as a parent, you can opt out of your child's directory information being released, or your child's image being included. So it's similar to that, and parents will be able to opt out, will pretty much probably just use this verbatim language, and then ensure internally that we've got a good system for staff being able to check to see if that out, that opt-out is on, on file. So there's no engagement with a student about any of these things in violation of the parent's request to opt out.
Quick question. Will the parents have to fill that out at the beginning of the year? Or is this something that, when we have events, I just used the Healthy, Healthy Youth Survey, when we have events that are generalized surveys that might have any issues here, are we going to remind parents? I think parents should be reminded, same with, if a, if a teacher is going to broach any of these topics, I think there, the reminder should be provided.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do both. So it'll be kind of a blanket, one at the beginning, but then, yes, like before, before the health curriculum, for Healthy Youth, those, the things that we're doing now will remain in place. So this won't take the place of that.
And, and if the teacher were to, again, broach some of these topics, they would send a opt-out form prior to broaching those topics, correct?
Well, first, teachers shouldn't really be broaching these topics if it's not connected with the curriculum, but, so I'll just, let me put kind of a scenario out. So if, if a student came in and wanted to speak to a counselor, and the child wanted to talk about anything that's on this list, and the parent had completed an opt-out form saying, "I don't want there to be any engagement with my child about any of these things." That can be checked, and if that is, if that opt-out is on file, then the counselor knows I'm not able to have a conversation with you about any of these things.
I guess my question is, is, so let's say, I mean, it seems to me that, what I'm seeing here is, is that to be compliant with the law, the counselor should also probably contact the parents and ask them whether they choose to opt out prior to having that decision.
The written notice, yeah. 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 And it's, again, it's kind of like in the moment, though. I mean, typically, I, I would say, I don't think it's the, the, the staff member initiating the conversation.
Yeah.
Right?
The bigger, the bigger thing, I think, like, with the sex ed curriculum, the Healthy Youth Survey, like, that's all.
Right, that's all, we've got that.
But the little one-off ones, yes, there should be written.
Like I said, if, if a student comes in and wants to talk to a counselor about something, a parent needs to be notified that they're going to approach one of these topics. And that's what it's telling.
Yeah, but I'm saying in the moment, like a counselor, if a student signs up to see a counselor and says, "I'd like to talk about XYZ," the, the counselor's not going to know that that's coming. So they can't provide prior written notice to the parent to say, "Your child's going to come in and talk to me about XYZ."
I know, but can, but, can we, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, but if there's that opt-out form, I mean, if the parent does the opt-out form at the beginning, then the counselor can say right there, "I can't talk to you because you've opted out." So I think it's maybe about who's doing the initiating?
Well, can we not just provide that at the beginning of the school year for all parents?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
Okay. So we don't have to wait until?
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay.
I know, I know, a lot of families may not think it's an issue. Maybe they think, oh, that's not my, I, I don't want that, but I don't think my kid would do that.
Oh, I see.
And they may not fill that out. I, I think we need to make sure that parents are somehow notified that that discussion was being had, and make sure they don't want to opt out, to be completely compliant with the law. Because I think parents have the right then to, if, if the, because right here, it says they should have that right before we do it. And if somehow it slips in that we have that conversation, then the parents still have a right to opt out, and they need to be notified that the conversation is being had, and that they have the right to opt out. You see what I'm saying?
I think so.
So you're just saying build-in?
So essentially, if they, counselor, like, to use your example, if a kid comes to talk with a counselor about one of these topics, the counselor then needs to call or send the parents an email, or notify the parents that a topic within these, this realm was had, and ask did they want to opt out on any further conversations.
Well, I think, I think we have to, I think, to your point, I mean, we got to flush out the form and the process.
I, I just want to make sure that parents' rights are, parents have the right to know.
We'll have to flush that out.
And, and, you know.
So there's other, we talked to Ron Cone before, who, Ron Cone's RT, RT guy, and he said that it would be relatively easy for him to have, when a counselor comes in and talks to, you know, Johnny, little Johnny, that, that they can quick, they can really easily, like, just do a push notification to the parents and say, and then it can be just really generic, like, "I spoke to your kid today, please speak to your kid to find out what we, what we talked about." And it could even be something like, like schooling or grades or something, like, maybe my kid goes in and talks about something about grades, and maybe like that is not quite being translated to me, and then they, and the counselor, you know, so it even could be like grades or graduation or something like that. But, but if we could just implement that little thing, I think that would also be very helpful, just a quick push notifications to parents, boom, I met with your kid today, go talk to your kid about it. And if you have any, any additional questions, you can come to me as a counselor, but first work it out with your kid, you know? I think that's also something we could very easily put in.
So I, I'm, in my, in my head, maybe I'm envisioning something like, you know, five o'clock at night, your kid misses school, you get a phone call, right? Auto, auto calls or whatever. A similar, just push.
Yeah, your kid, yeah, push notification, your kid met with the counselor today, work it out with him, and him or her, and then if you have any questions, you can reach out.
And if you'd like to opt out, please.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure, I, you know, I also, I need to think about the, the protection of staff in this. And so I think what this is saying is that, you know, we don't want a staff member to have a conversation with a student, and then, and then to say, "Oh, I had this conversation with your student parent," and then the parent says, "Well, I didn't want that to happen." So it can't, it can't happen after the fact, right?
But, but at the same time, then, then if the teacher or counselor is uncomfortable having that conversation because he doesn't want that to, he or she doesn't want that to happen, then they shouldn't have the conversation. They shouldn't have a conversation they don't feel comfortable having. The staff shouldn't have a conversation that they don't feel comfortable having without parental permission. So if they're not comfortable having that conversation with the possibility of the parent coming back and saying, "I did not want you to have that conversation," then they need to take, take the steps to protect themselves. The staff needs to. I mean, because, yeah, they'll put yourself in a position that puts you in trouble.
Yeah, we have to kind of think through this.
And, yeah, so it's essentially creating an opt-in structure rather than an opt-out.
Yeah, I don't know, I think we've, we've just got to, we've got the- Uh, yeah, I don't know. I think we've, we've just gotta, we've got the.
Got the language.
Got the language.
Yeah, and I was asked if we've been provided any guidance. Um, you know, typically, we, school districts do get some sort of guidance on implementing, you know, new requirements or something. We've not received anything yet. Um, so, you know, I don't know if there's something forthcoming. I've heard, I haven't heard that there is. So, you know, at this point, what we're doing is really, you know, under, you know, it does include questions about any of the following. So that's the other part, just to be perfectly, you know, transparent as we're sort of thinking through this. So if a student comes in and says, I wanna talk about X, Y, Z, and they start saying X, Y, Z, and the person's not asking any questions, do you know what I mean? I just, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to, we have to create a system that's understandable and, you know, follows the law and is workable. What's that?
It says that include questions.
Yeah.
About policy, not just exclusively if it includes questions.
Yeah.
So it's just saying, if any of these things include questions, but but even if they include statements, it would still be part of this law.
Yeah, yeah. Other student get, yeah, so. And so, I mean, honestly, I'll say, I I feel like we've got surveys covered. Our district surveys don't ask anything about this. We've got an opt-out for healthy youth. Assignments, we don't, there, you know, there's no assignments that should and that's already in policy uh be asking any of these things or addressing any of these things, questionnaires, role-playing activities. I feel like it, that's covered. Recordings of their child, I'm not even sure what that would be because we don't. So that one has me puzzled a little bit. It's this part, this other student engagement, that makes me think about, you know, I think an engagement with a student is a, a conversation, a meeting, uh, you know? And so that's the part that we have to figure out, well, what exactly does that? How do, how do we um?
How do we appropriately address that?
Yeah, and so, because I don't think that we, we don't have plans, we wouldn't say, oh, next Tuesday, we're gonna have meetings with your child about the mental health problems of the child or or the family, right? It would be, it's like student initiated, right? That a student comes in and says, this is something I'm struggling with. So I think to sort of cover all of the bases, you know, one, one way to do that is to to have this blanket opt-out so parents can know, yes, I opt my child out of any engagement. And we have that on file. So people, everyone knows immediately, right, that that's not. And then if it, if there isn't that on file, I hear what you're saying, and a student comes in and says, I wanna talk about X, Y, Z, and there isn't an opt-out on file, what's the, what's the next step there?
I think um, I think we, you know, we've asked some good questions, some good thoughts. I think we, at this point, we, we look, Dr. Pearson, your staff, to kind of, to kind of create a policy procedure.
Working with legal counsel and.
And then we'll, we'll readdress and who, who knows what's gonna happen in the next month between now and then. Wazda may create a fantastic policy, you know? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I hear you.
Okay. We will now move on to our next segment of the meeting, unfinished business, policy number thirty-two eleven and regulation number thirty-two eleven, students gender-inclusive schools.
Okay, I think it would be uh best to do policy and then procedure. And two, so we're not getting them all kind of totaled together. So I think I should start with where um the board, so the board passed for first reading at the last meeting. The updated uh policy thirty-two eleven and.
Is that found on page two-twenty? Is that?
It's two. Oh, gosh, I don't have the board packet.
The slide, it's two-ten.
I, I, what we, we put them in this order, so it goes policy with track changes, policy clean version, and then the La Center.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Gotcha, I see, okay.
Okay, so um, so on this one, um, this is the red line, you know, added version that that the board added to at the last meeting. So this is our current policy with the additions, a couple of things are just, you know, um formatting, but um I think the, the big part was the um that values parental collaboration and involvement was put in here. And I think the word comprehensive was struck and facilitating was struck, was struck. Okay, I thought it might be helpful just to put a side-by-side and it's gonna be harder to do with the procedure, but um before any motions are kind of put on the, on the table, um Micah had also asked that the La Center school district policy be um considered by the board. So I don't know if I'll be able to do this. Um, give me just a minute. I just wanna put them side-by-side because they're, um, because they're both based on Wazda model policy, they're almost identical. Um, the policies themselves. So, and I know you can maybe see them in your packet a little bit uh better. But this is, the La Center policy is here and this is our amended um current policy. Let me try to make this a little bit bigger. But because school districts are required to adopt the Wazda model policy, um, you'll see that it's like almost identical. So if you want me to scroll.
Now, Micah, you asked specifically about the La Center policy brought up here, correct?
Yeah, I would, I would actually like to pass the La Center one.
Could you maybe uh give us your thoughts on why this is uh, why, why this?
Um, yeah.
What are the advantages to this?
And if we can, I mean, if if you, I think maybe let's separate policy from procedure.
Yeah. Let's start with the policy.
So with, yeah, so with the policy, I'm sure you guys have read them.
Yeah.
The only, the only distinction that that I personally found in any of the verbiage was so obviously in our policy, we were looking at striking comprehensive, La Center, I believe, has that removed. And then our line about values parental collaboration and involvement, I think that's our own line. And La Center doesn't have it. So it's just two verbiage.
And they, they kept facilitating and you struck facilitating.
But. So strictly speaking to policy thirty-two eleven, these two policies were discussed, were.
So strictly, strictly speaking about the policies, um, they're pretty close. I'm good with either one. Um, procedures, the original.
We'll get down, yeah. But the, cause, cause my understanding, as I've done a little research, is La Center has actually been implemented and is being used in.
Yes.
It's currently being used and it's been used for how long?
So La Center passed their policy and procedures over a year ago. And and in that time, they've been, um, had a couple uh legal actions taken against it and and they've done, this came through, this came through on the, through the other side. So um in that regard, I feel like it's, it has like proven, proven. However, um, in that time that that has been scrutinized, we, we have a new, a new law, a parental rights um bill that's came out. And that actually, I think, like, gives us a little bit more grass. So, so I wanna actually look through this, through specifically the procedure and like, okay, now that we have a little bit more daylight, a little more grass, can we like, can we eat, eat some of that up? So I, I really wanna be like as gre- as aggressive as we can be as far as like, you know, all the things that we, we've talked about here today. Um, but as far as the policy itself, they're, you know, um, they're pretty, they're pretty close. I just wanna make it as strong, as strong as I possibly can.
That's actually why I like, I mean, they're essentially the same. The, the one difference is, is we actually put, I like the line that says the values parental collaboration involvement, because this is, this is the, kind of the overriding principle of of the policy, right? What, what we're trying to get at. And part of that is, is I think we're reinforcing for our district how important parental collaboration is. And and I, I mean, we've has that, that's one of our stated goals. So that's, that's one of the reasons I like it. I, I don't, I think both are good.
You like, you like ours better right now.
Well, I, I like the one, I like including the, the, the part that says that value, that values parental collaboration involvement, that addition. I like that addition because it reinforces something that we've stated as one of our goals for the district.
I agree with that. Yeah, I can't like that one.
Can I? Uh, so I'll, I'll add to, to your question. So um when this came up, I reached out to the board president in La Center and said, walk me through your, your policy. They, they passed it in January of twenty-three. There was uh some issues that came out and OSPI requested documentation. They provided the documentation to OSPI in May. OSPI came back, actually, OSPI didn't come back, La Center actually went to them in November and said, what's going on? OSPI said, um, you know, we want you to do X, Y, and Z, and La Center said, okay, show us the law we're breaking and we're happy to meet with you and discuss it. And that was in November and OSPI hasn't responded to them since November, so. I don't know where it is from there, but that's kind of the, the background of the complaint, so to speak.
So it's not a priority for OSPI?
Or, or there's just nothing there, you know?
That's what I'm saying.
So, yeah, so the legality, I mean, if they're not breaking the law, I don't, I don't know what they're.
So, so Gabe, you, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just, I was just gonna say that I, these are virtually the same thing and we have a, probably a longer discussion on the procedure. So I think we can make a pretty quick decision on this.
I agree. Is there anything in the, in the, in the La Center one that makes, that you think it makes us stronger? What were the differences you mentioned?
Well, we, the only difference really in our policy and theirs is we took out facilitating and we added the the sentence in parental collaboration. I'm, I'm just gonna give my two points. Look, La Center's had the policy on paper for a year. I don't see any potential need to go through and strike and redact and do, and the policy's there. It's, it's seemed to.
And I just wanna reiterate too, the policy that they have, I mean, we're just talking policy now, is the basically verbatim, the Wazda model policy. Just like our policy is verbatim Wazda model policy, which is why they're nearly identical. Except the words that the board added last time.
So can we entertain a motion?
Well, we, we're not, we're not voting on policy then procedure, are we? Is that how we?
You know, ti- ti- typically, yes, yes, you vote on, vote on the policy. And then, because remember, you know, typically it's board policies, administrative procedures, right? Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Well, then if there's no more discussion on the policies or the differences, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a certain option of policy.
I'm gonna just ask uh our legal counsel.
Do we need to scratch the other one last week?
You did pass the, the policy for first reading last time, so I just wanna make sure procedurally you're doing it right.
Yeah, so la- so last time you passed policy thirty-two eleven.
For first reading.
For first reading.
First reading. Uh, you didn't, you hadn't looked at this uh proposed La Center policy. So if the board wants to pass the thirty-two eleven that you passed for first reading, then you make a motion to pass policy thirty-two eleven for second reading. Yeah. If you're gonna pass La Center policy, um, you didn't pass that for first reading last time. So I would advise, if you're gonna go with that one, to pass uh policy pattern after La Center for first and second reading.
Okay, we can wonder the other. So I'll entertain a motion.
And just to clarify, that right there, what we're looking at, that, the one that ours on the left, that is the one that we passed for first reading. Yeah, there, okay, great. So I'll, I'll make a motion, if that's okay?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve our policy thirty-two eleven, uh gender-inclusive schools for second reading as presented.
Any discussion? Not? We'll go for the roll call, okay?
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, don't. I, I thank you and I apologize, I did, yes.
We didn't get, we didn't get that, sorry. Advisory.
Oh, I'm sorry, dang it.
Do you? I mean, you could.
Oh, Mallory, yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. That's probably my fault, Mallory, I apologize, I should, yeah.
Okay, so policy thirty-two eleven passes for second reading, motion, uh motion carries four zero. We will now move on to thirty-two eleven, uh the procedure for thirty-two eleven gender-inclusive schools.
Okay, so the procedure is where there's a lot more to, um, to talk through. So um, I'll see if I can try to, to bring up um the two side-by-side again. So you have these both in your board packet. Um, this red strike-through underlined version is the amended, sorry, amended procedure that the board passed for first reading uh at the, at the last board meeting. And then here is the La Center, it should say procedure here.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just verbatim, um, copied from their website. It still says La Center, I just put it in kind of looking like our format. Um, so I think if you, if you compare um the, the amendments that Micah had suggested for thirty-two eleven really came from some of the wording from the La Center procedure. And so those were the things that you all looked at last meeting. And we can kind of scroll through and do a side-by-side. And then um you also made some further amendments that are showing in blue at the last meeting. So the, that's what passed for first reading last meeting, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna make a couple of comments and Bronson might also want to make a couple of comments on the, the La Center. So I think um in looking at and all of the information that we could find online, there were because La Center took the Wazda model policy, just like we have done, um, and they added to it, but they also changed some things in it. That led to uh some complaints being filed and an investigation um by OSPI um to see if they were in violation of, of law. So there's, what we can't find is any um closure available online. I know Bronson was gonna try to reach out to their legal counsel. Um, but we obviously, you know, we wanna make sure we're following the law and protecting the district from litigation and uh, and that kind of thing as well.
That's right. I did reach out to their attorney, it left a voicemail, so I haven't been able to connect with him yet, but. But Mr. Gal, uh, Mr. Count, uh, School Board Director Galbraith is right in that there was uh complaints filed with OSPI. OSPI looked into it and that's all I've found too. I haven't seen, I haven't seen any finding that the La Center procedure was in violation of law, so.
Yeah, when I, well, yeah, just again, when I spoke with the board president, there, there's been no- nothing. Like, they don't even have any idea what's going on. And it seems like they've had to reach, reach out to OSPI to like find out, but.
So. Tracy, do you have more to share or can I try to direct us a little bit? Do you? Okay, so for me, when we talked about this last time, I expressed that some of my concern was that I felt that these proposed amendments became a little bit contradictory because we were kind of speaking out both sides of our mouth. We were saying, we won't tell parents because that's the law, but we really value telling parents and working with parents, et cetera, et cetera. So I was really unsettled about that. But then when I read the La Center policy, their one small change rectified all of that for me. And that is that they put the onus, I'm using that word again, the onus on the student to be the driver of the action. So in our policy, it says that the school will be the one that approaches a transgender or gender expressive student and, and has that conversation, what, what, you know, name changes, pronouns, et cetera. And that felt to me, and I expressed last time, that that was a real deal-breaker for me. That if I felt like the school district was hiding information from my kid, we've already done homeschool, I will happily do it again. That's, that is a deal-breaker for me. If the school district is hiding information from me about my children, we're out. Um, so reading the La Center policy, that changed everything. That made it. That made it so that it's the responsibility of the student to say, "Hey, school, this is what's happening in my life, this is how I want it to be handled." That still gives them that protection, it still gives them the right to have influence over whether or not their family is notified. That all stays in the La Center policy, which after my conversations that I referenced with a couple of our families this week, that was interesting, actually, they were split. I was only able to talk to two families and I got kind of opposing opinions on that. But I do think that there's value in protecting that element. And La Center's policy still does that. It still says, "We will counsel with the student, we will decide whether or not notifying parents is the right decision," taking into consideration this right here, the WASDA policy and the legal news, saying that decisions about communicating with a parent and guarding about such things should be made holistically based on many factors, as, based on as many factors as the school is aware. And anyway, so, and then it still talks about collaborating with the family. So to me, for our discussion, I'm okay abandoning first reading and just focusing the rest of our discussion on the La Center policy, if everyone else is okay with that, but I don't know where everyone is.
You mean the procedure?
Procedure. Let me add a layer of context to that. So when I proposed this a few weeks ago, the, that's what I had in mind. And then kind of what we came back with, it was, it was like, kind of like, La Center's policy and then our policy and La Center's dropped into ours and it kind of like, and I agree, it just didn't work. And that's why, in reflecting this these last two weeks, I'm like, I'm just not happy with our policy. Let's just, let's just do La Center's policy, right? And, or procedure, procedure, thank you. And so, so that's why, I agree, I would like to scratch our procedure and just focus on La Center's procedure.
So probably what we need to do is make a motion then to...
I wanna make a couple comment, well, I guess you can still talk about it, but I just feel like, I feel like I need to make a couple of comments. So when Bronson and I first did a legal review of the La Center procedure, because the RCW says that directed WASDA to draft model policy and procedure and for school districts to adopt that model policy and procedure, we wanted to look at La Center's procedure to see, are they adding to it or are they taking away from it? And so parts that they added were the things that the board discussed adding, the collaboration with families and making the statements about the importance of parental involvement and all of these acknowledgements. And so those were additions to that didn't change, but really enhanced. I think the complaints that are being lodged against the superintendent, right? If you read the articles, it's against the superintendent, is for not following the law because the procedure, which is an administrative procedure, makes changes to what the law is. So that's where I get uncomfortable because obviously I don't wanna be subject, I don't wanna put the district at risk or myself professionally at risk for not following the law or changing the law, just like I'm not gonna change the RCW that came about about parent rights, we're not gonna mess with that and change it. So really, that's what makes me nervous. I'm not uncomfortable at all with adding language about parental rights and things like that, but when we are starting to change an administrative procedure, which I'm responsible for, I, I, I'm, it's highly problematic and I can't recommend.
So what, what parts of it, is it just that one? Because to me, that was the only change that I noticed, was that they changed it from the school district approaching a student to the student approaching the school district. That's the only difference I saw.
Well, if you read all of the articles, so it's things like this, and so I'm just, you know, it's that the school, the superintendent, based on the articles, sent out directives to staff saying, "You cannot ask a student what their preferred pronoun is."
Right.
Right? So is, and then complaints were made and so forth. So I, I don't know how the board's interpreting these policy updates. I would say the vast majority of how it, it works in my perspective is that a student says, "This is my name and this is what I wanna be referred to and these are my pronouns." But, so are you interpreting this as it's against policy if a, if a student, I know some students in our system who are transgender. And so I don't, I don't think me asking them, right, like, "What would you like to be called? What is your, what pronoun do you like to use?" Is in any way like pushing an agenda or, or, you know, and so I think that's where I'm trying to protect staff too. Is that what we're saying? Is that this would prohibit a staff member when a, when a student is a known transgender or gender expansive student, prohibit a staff member from asking that student, "What do you wanna be referred to?" Because I think that's pretty typical, even just, you know, not just on pronouns, but like when the school year starts, kids go by nicknames and some kids have a formal name, but they go by their middle name. And so I just wanna be clear because there's some things that are happening in La Center that I just don't know if that's where you're wanting to go and how you're interpreting this, because I think this is not about, this is about like talking to a student who is known to be transgender and asking them what's their preferred pronoun.
Yeah, I interpret it as the law's the law, right? So if a student said to any of us, "My name's X and I go by these pronouns," then we would follow the law, right? That's how it goes, right? I think what this does, or the way I understand this, is the staff is not required to ask preferred pronouns. The staff's not required to send out a, like, I wouldn't expect the staff to send out a survey at the beginning of the year and say, "List your favorite colors and all this stuff" and then have your pronouns listed up by the name like that.
And they're not required to do that now. And I don't think that's what this says either, because it says as appropriate, there's a typo, but as appropriate, school employees will privately ask known transgender or gender expansive students how they'd like to be addressed. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I just don't, I don't know if you're getting at, you wanna prohibit a staff member to ask a known transgender student what they wanna be called?
No, I don't.
I'm not.
Yeah, well, as I read that, part of it is, I'm looking at this going, yeah, that's a non-issue. I mean, if, neither, neither our policy nor their policy says anything to say that a staff member can't ask someone what their pronouns are. I mean, like to your point, people, I go by Josh or Joshua. People all the time ask me, "Hey, would you prefer to be called Josh or Joshua?" And heck, I don't even go by my first name. So, I mean, that's, that's fine. There's nothing in either policy that restricts somebody from doing that. I think sometimes, unfortunately, in the media, they will take issues that are not issues and create issues just to create contention and create, create buzz, because the media is trying, needs to get eyes on their things. And so they're, you know, again, this is not, there's nothing in this policy that I read that said, "You are not allowed to ask people their gender or how, or their pronouns," or there's nothing in the...
You're not asking you to do that.
So please don't...
No, I mean, that sounds like an, like to me, that's an overstep, in my opinion, of the superintendent to do that.
The way I'd like to see it read is that, is that the staff shows up and teaches the kids, that's it. If the kid says, "Hey, I would like to be, you know, called this or that," then, okay, great, well, that's, that's all we'll work with. But other than that, like, we just show up, teach the kids, love all the kids 100% and give them everything we got and that's it. That's really it. We just kind of just remove that, that thing. Now, yeah, now if there's a known transgender kid, can the staff talk to that kid? And, yeah, sure, yeah, but...
Because that's what this says.
And in fact, sure.
I don't think the other doesn't say that.
Well, it says that a school employee will privately ask them.
As appropriate, and it says, like I said, yeah.
And I think that in a lot of cases, it is absolutely appropriate and to privately ask the kid, "Hey, how do you wanna be, how do you wanna be called?" That's, yeah, there's nothing in the policy that prohibits that.
Yeah, and Dr. Perez, I think what you're referring to is their, their superintendent sent out the email, kind of instructed, "Hey, guys, this is how we're doing this thing."
Just according to the media.
Right, right. So let's just say that didn't happen. Now the complaint doesn't exist and they move on, right? So just don't do that.
I don't plan to. But I'm wanting to be clear about how, because there's a lot of context around the procedure and La Center, and I know you brought forward like La Center and I want, you know, and so I just, I wanna make sure our expectations are clear and that...
Don't send out the email.
To be perfectly, I mean, what would satisfy me is taking the WASDA policy, we don't even have to add, I mean, there's a, there are a lot of platitudes and declarative language in this procedure. If we just took the WASDA policy and added in there that, just changed that, that it's the student's responsibility to notify the school of any name, pronoun, or gender change.
Policy and procedure.
Sorry, I keep saying policy, I mean procedure. If we just took the WASDA procedure and added, changed it, amended it, so that it was now the student's responsibility, it's no longer the school coming and approaching the student. If it's now the student saying, "Okay, this is what I wanna be known by, this is how I want things to be handled," and then we add in the language about FERPA and that we won't be withholding information, that's enough for me. I don't need to have the, what are they called, the guiding principles in there? I don't, I don't need any of that.
I actually, I like the guiding principles.
Perhaps, and maybe this, maybe this covers it. I'm just saying, it doesn't need to be complicated.
Yeah, but I like the guiding principles because inevitably there will be gray in any rule. And, and the guiding principles are what you use, and unfortunately, for good or for bad, the policies now are so watered down that you read the policy and the policy almost means nothing. It's just so vague. So the guiding principles are there to help people understand how this policy, or how these procedures are to be specifically implemented in the gray. So when you are in the gray, this is how you should evaluate the gray, based on these specific guiding principles. And that's why I actually think the guiding principles are beneficial here in the procedure, because it helps people understand how to apply the procedure in specific instances where it's not explicitly stated. So it helps to provide staff more protection and helps to provide administrators more protection because they can say, "Here are the principles that, that I used to come to the conclusion of what I did." And then we can say, "Okay, that was appropriate," or, "No, that wasn't appropriate based on our guiding principles."
I think it's also fair to say too, that part of the complaint in La Center had to do with them, like, writing up teachers or putting a letter in their file for asking pronouns, that was a big part of the complaint as well, which obviously we're not advocating for any of that, so.
And again, may or may not have happened. Obviously, the investigation has gone nowhere. I mean, heck, it's been over a year and they haven't done anything. I, to me, and OSPI has made no steps to be aggressive in, in ending the policy or requiring them to change it. To me, I say, "Look, we'll change it when you come to us."
Bronson?
The, so I looked at them and ultimately, the board is the policymakers, why you're elected by the people to make the policy. I'm hired as the attorney to...
Keep us out of trouble?
Yeah, try to keep you out of trouble. So, and the reason why we worked on the first one last time is because we took, Tracy and I took, the model WASDA procedure and then added to it as, as...
From the La Center. We took the La Center, guiding principles, and put it there.
So that's how we came up with that.
Yeah, and I went through in, you know, my copy of La Center's policy, I went through and marked the things that you removed and I'm comfortable with those things being removed. And by doing that, this is virtually what we talked about last week, other than this just makes that small change that it's the students that...
I like that small change.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess just give me my two cents and I'll be done. I would accept either policy, but I would like the La Center policy because of the small change.
Bronson, did you, obviously you heard legal, but...
Yeah, and I looked at both of them and you, the board reviewed the new law that's going to effect on June 6th. And the overriding law, you know, the requirement in that is, when you talk to students about certain topics, the parents have to be notified first and then have the opportunity to opt out of those conversations. But it says they'll be provided written notice, so that'd be notified first. So both procedure, well, the, the things that you wanted to add to it, I think, were based on that premise, that you wanna make sure the parents are, have full knowledge of what they're being asked at school regarding non-curriculum type things, on gender and morality and religion and all those things, so.
Again, I just, I'll just, my last point is this, the, the La Center, like I, almost kind of feels like we're overcomplicating a little bit, in my own opinion, but the La Center policies out there. It's been out there. If there was any law in that policy that would have been, is broken, OSPI would have sued La Center in a heartbeat and it would be over with, but they haven't yet. I gotta, I gotta think that it, it's not breaking the law. It puts the parents' parental stuff in that we all, I think we've talked about in the, in the new law coming up, which adds, almost even solidifies this a little bit more, I think. And so, again, I mean, my, the declarative statements, I think are fine. I don't have an issue with them and I just think we...
Do you think that's a fair assessment, Bronson, that a year and a few months has been long enough to, to say that this is legally, I know they're putting you in a hard position...
Yeah, I mean, if OSPI has an issue with it, we'll probably hear from them.
Look how fast they went with the mask recall. I mean, that was when they were suing them in court. I think if there was anything, in my opinion, even Bronson's the lawyer, but if there was a legal issue, I personally think OSPI would...
I guess that's the question.
And I think, and I think La Center was, I haven't talked to them, but I think they painted a target on them because they were taking certain actions against staff members that they thought they should do.
That's really what the complaint's...
And that's different here, you're passing the procedure and you're not, it's not with the goal of now you're going to now go out and try to discipline some staff members for things that you think they should be doing and they're not doing, and then putting a, a letter in their file. And that's what happened in La Center and I think then they generated complaints and then it got to OSPI.
I guess, and the question we're asking is, in your experience, how quickly does OSPI typically move if they have a concern with a given complaint? Does it typically take a year and a half?
You know, some of these agencies depends on what they have going on. Some of them take a while, some of them can take a couple of years, some of them can take a month or two.
Okay. So it's certainly not a priority for them though?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you think if they waited over a year? If you think if they waited over a year, it's not something that's emergent, that's...
Perfect, that's what I needed to...
But I think we need to be aware of the fact that right now, we're only talking about one school district and it might become more of a priority to them if another school district...
Yeah, I think if, I think if they came back and said, "You're in violation of this specific law," we would have to address it.
I guess what would happen if that were the case? Is it simply a matter of, we're just putting you on notice, you need to change this?
We'll come back to you in a board meeting and say, we...
What, I, I mean...
They'll send you a letter.
Yeah, we'll get a letter and you'll see the letter.
It's always important to remember that policy, or excuse me, law trumps policy, contract trumps policy. So even if there's, there could be something in our policy right now that's outdated and not in alignment with, with a law and that, the law always prevails.
That's right. And, you know, they may come back and say, "We reviewed this procedure and we, it's our opinion, it doesn't comply with law and this is the changes that we request the district make."
And they'll have to tell us what law we're breaking, right? I mean, if they come back with a letter and say, "We don't like it," okay.
Yeah, we'll deal with it.
But the difference with La Center is they took action against staff.
And it will not be a problem here because we're not asking...
I'm not intending, I won't be doing that.
No, and no one wants you to.
I won't be doing that and I wanna be clear, because that's, this whole thing around La Center is that that's not what the board is thinking, that by adopting this policy, now there's a prohibition against a staff member talking to a student.
As a board member would want to bring you under scrutiny if you were to do that. That's not appropriate and we don't want you to do that. I don't want you to do that.
I think the four of us here all are adamant, we're not breaking, we're not asking anyone to break the law.
Well, not even just break the law, that...
But we're not saying that you don't, that you would say it's a violation of policy if, or procedure if a teacher has a known transgender student in their classroom and asks the student how they'd like to be addressed. That's not a violation of procedure.
In fact, I would probably say, "Thank you."
Okay, so then if that's the case, then we do need to change it, right? Because that's not, right? Because that's not, right?
If a, if a teacher did, it's not in violation of the policy. There's nothing that says a teacher cannot do that.
Yeah, I guess maybe you're right.
It, it doesn't say the teacher cannot do it. It, it says that the initiative falls on the student. If a teacher does it, it's not in violation of the policy. They haven't done anything wrong.
Want to make sure.
It's just saying that if they don't do it, they haven't done anything wrong either. If they don't go out of their way to ask, they're not doing anything wrong. It's basically saying, look, the staff isn't responsible to go to every person and find out everything about them. What it is saying is, is that the individual, and, and I find it interesting, we're letting these 13-year-olds make massive medical decisions that are not appropriate for 13-year-olds, but that's what the law allows. Well, if they're, if we're allowing them to act like adults, then they need to take, act like adults here and take the initiative. And say, look, if this is important to me, then I need to come forward and say how I want to be addressed, how I want to be identified. And that's all it's saying. And to me, if you're gonna, you, you can't play both sides. If you're gonna say you're old enough to make consent to do certain things, then you need to take responsibility.
The other thing, I, exactly. And, um, I think in the La Center policy, Bronson, but I want to just double check with you. I mean, there is, uh, the, the law does say that we are required to use the pronouns that a student wants to use and, and it's not compliant with the law to knowingly not use the pronouns that, that the student wants. And we did have a complaint, um, along those lines, board will remember, um, a year or two ago. So there's nothing in the La Center policy that conflicts with that law, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think ultimately too, and from a staff perspective, the staff can show up and teach. And if, if there is a, you know, if they know there is a known transgender student in their class, they don't have to go and ask. Especially, like, we have staff that's probably uncomfortable, just the same way we have in reverse, right?
Exactly. And I don't think the procedure now is saying staff have to do that either.
I know, but I, I just, to me, look, if you want to ask, then, cool. Like, we're not, we're not saying no.
It, it doesn't, it basically says, if the staff wants to, they can. If they don't, they don't. Treat everybody, everybody with civility and with kindness. Treat everybody equally. That is at the core of what we're trying to do. And also, if, if it is important to me, then I need to make sure and let others know that it is important to me. And so I need to stand up for myself and what I want. And that's, that's not an unreasonable ask. And we also don't expect or want the teachers to go out and send out a mass email, you know, that's not part of the deal, right? It's just one-on-one, okay? All right.
What else? Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Somebody want to open to a motion? Anybody like to make one unless you?
Are you okay?
No, we need to have.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Mallory, Mallory, any comments?
Yeah, when we do the motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt procedure 3211, gender-inclusive schools. The La Center.
I'll fix it all to say.
Version, wrote, yeah, okay. For first and second reading.
Do, do you need to say with, with changes reflecting Kenwood School District?
Yeah, I need to go through.
With changes reflecting this Kenwood School District, yes.
And I will do that, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
If there's not any other discussion, I will call for the roll call vote and we will start with Mallory, if you want to make an advisory vote.
Uh, no.
Okay, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Gable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, policy 3211, La Center's version, uh, the motion passes for zero. And thank you, everyone. Thank you, Bronson. Thank you, Dr. Pierce.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, at 7:45, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then we'll get back to finishing up reports and discussions and. All right, so, uh, we're gonna get started and we are going to excuse Mallory here at 8:15, um, so she can go knock out her schoolwork and all that important stuff. So, um, let's.
Along those lines, one thing I didn't say, both to you, Mallory, I'm sure this pertains to you and to all students and maybe a, a reminder to parents. I, I know the AP tests are coming up. I'm sure probably you have more than, more than a few big tests and, and maybe some of those AP tests. Good luck. District is pulling for you and, uh, parents, remember, your kids are stressed. They're trying to do their best on these tests.
All right, well, we're gonna get started, so.
Motion to, do we need a motion to excuse her? We did it last time. Last time we excused her.
From the meeting, yes, but to leave.
Oh, okay. I'm learning.
All right, we will get started. Next up, 10-year capital facility plan, Mr. Ryan Jones. Good to see you.
See you as well. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Pierce. So, uh, Ryan Jones, capital project manager, and I'll be presenting the 10-year capital facilities plan. Now, the presentation itself is really highlights from the plan itself. It's, uh, available online and we update that as we make updates. So I'd highly encourage anyone in the audience or anyone watching to, you know, visit the, the website and get the full, it's roughly about 40 pages, uh, pre, or, uh, plans, so. That, we'll go ahead and dig into it. So once again, this is to review and, uh, you know, communicate our plan to, to the board. All right, so the capital projects plan is actually a collaboration between community members and, and Kenwood School District staff. So here you can see, uh, the list of the current, uh, members of the committee. And two of the gentlemen are here with us tonight, uh, Mr. Pat Mastalar and, uh, Mr. Nick Castarina. So they, uh, they work with us. We meet quarterly typically and they work with us to make updates to this plan, review updates, discuss. And then, of course, we make any changes, or, with suggested changes and then, of course, we present it to you for review and update as necessary. So, these are the, the members here. And as you can see, there's a number of KC staff members that are on the board, present here tonight as well. So, starting, starting off, the majority of the plan is really kind of a snapshot of what the district looks like currently. So this is a school facility inventory, so this is really all the square footage that the district maintains or oversees or has. We have it broken down, you know, elementary schools, middle school, high schools, alternative schools. I, I guess I should, I guess I should caveat that is, it doesn't have support facilities. This is strictly educational facilities in this, uh, these, uh, tables here. So, and they have references there if you'd like to visit those. But, uh, as you can see, our square footage, we list the capacity and that's kind of how we kind of determine, you know, what, what kind of, what size schools are we building? What are we seeing? You know, what's filling up, what's not? And, and, uh, that's kind of that square footage to student relationship there. And as, off to the right there, you can see the standards. So, all of our facilities sit on school sites and this is basically a snapshot of where we sit today as far as, uh, the, the properties that the district holds. To include future sites down there in lower right corner. So, these are properties that the district has procured, you know, for, uh, you know, elementary schools, high school sites. We currently have three elementary school sites and a, a shared high school, middle school site. So those are our properties that we, we now hold ownership over and, you know, as we look to the future, like, we hope to develop those, uh, at some point. Are any questions on this slide or?
It looks like there's four elementary.
Well, so some are smaller, so there's, there's one on like, uh, like, uh, see here, the, like the 10th Avenue in West Mountain. It's really not a, an ideal elementary site. We consider it more of a surplus site. So the others are, are elementary, so, sorry. So, portables, this is another snapshot. This is in 10-year plans. We just keep an inventory of portables. We track where they move year to year and that kind of helps us also anticipate, you know, what's the capacity of that school? Because obviously this is, and in addition to the square footage that we, you saw in the inventory, uh, in the, the first tables, so.
As we go further, when we get into some of the calculations about square footage? Thank you. When we use some of the calculations about square footage, do portables count in that?
They do not.
They do not? Okay.
Nope. And it's a blessing.
So that's, that's one of the reasons we use the portables then, I imagine, is to get increased square footage with?
It, it can be like if a school is, you know, and also just if, if a school is expanding because of our boundary lines and we can't, you know, and we can't obviously make more classrooms, you know, with construction, you know, portables are a viable option. And sometimes they're moved around in support of other, other things. But we have 112 in our inventory. And that makes up some, like, some smaller single ones, a, a, kind of a standard single classroom, then there's some double classrooms in that inventory. They're not, they're not identified here or differentiated here, but those all exist, so. So, you might remember, or remember this slide. This is kind of like the ICOS presentation, very similar. But this essentially is telling us when these sites are going to become eligible for state funds. If you recall, it's basically 30 years from last time we received, uh, school construction assistance. So, basically whenever, when the year was accepted by the board, plus 30 years, that's where we are. Now, I will, uh, point out that the high schools, you'll see that there is, um, you know, there's two numbers and a percentage. We've, we've done additions using SCAP funds, so obviously that square footage of those areas aren't going to be eligible at the same time as perhaps the original construction. So, that's something we've kind of broke out a little more this year to help explain that. Are there any questions on this slide? All right. So, now looking forward, so these are basi, this is basically a table showing the schools that are going to come eligible in the next eight, seven, eight years. So, um, and these would of course be targets for perhaps a future bond. So, you can see Highlands, Washington, Hawthorne, Park, Vista, Essent, and Horse Heaven. So, those are the targets for any future construction from a facility standpoint. As we look at, at the inventory, what's coming eligible for state funding assistance, uh, the condition from the ICOS. Off to the right here, you'll see as of November, this is the calculation that OSPI provided us as far as our eligibility for square footage. Now, as you can see, we are very much in the negative on elementary new construction. And that's in large part, I think I've explained before, the K3 CSR, or class size reduction grants that we received. We basically built, you know, almost 180,000 square feet through other means or other funding sources. And so, but that eventually came on the books and counted against us in our calculations because now we have all the square footage that we didn't have before that came on the books. And so that's reflected in that number there. Now, you'll see the modernization. Now, modernization and replacement, that applies to existing facility, existing square footage. As you can see on the, uh, there's none right now, but as you see off to the right here, you'll see the years that these, this number will start to populate. So, like in 2026, this number will then be 86,430. Then in 2027, it'll be 86,430 plus 39,667. That number will continue to grow as more square footage, more sites, more facilities become eligible. Then, of course, down here, we have, uh, some new square footage, front house in, uh, this would be high school, nine through 12. And then for modernization, there's zero currently, so. Any questions about this slide? This is really, this is kind of looking forward, right? Everything we've reviewed previously has been where, it's kind of a snapshot, where are we at? This is where are we going? With that, if there's any comments or questions?
Anybody have any comments or questions?
The only thing I, I did have one quick question, and I couldn't remember it from the ICOS presentation you provided, is, are the same rules applied? If I remember right, wasn't there like a 60% and then they won't fund it?
Correct, yeah, they expect you to basically ma, they expect you to stay above that 60, it's a 60 points. I, I guess it's percentages, it's out of 100, right? But, uh, yes, they expect you to maintain that. So when you do a certified, so, so we do an internal one, um, district-wise and we update, do that annually, but every six years, we have to do what's called a certified, uh, certified, uh, ICOS, uh, like study and survey. And that's where we actually have a third party come in, somebody who's not, you know, internal, and they will make an assessment. And a lot of times, that's, that's one of the best numbers because it's always good to get fresh eyes on something. And a lot of times, that's, as long as we're maintaining above 60, a, a facility will be eligible. That was a long answer, sorry.
You shouldn't have any problems with Washington Elementary School?
No, no. We, we've made, like all these facilities, we really do, I want to say, we do a pretty good job of maintaining our, our existing facilities. We make investments in flooring, roofing, uh, you know, lighting. We, we make a lot of investments throughout. So some, even to the point sometimes where we hit that 30-year mark and it really becomes tough, like, what do, what do we do? This, this isn't that bad of a facility, but it is eligible for funding. And, you know, that's where we kind of rely on the members of the facilities committee who have a finger, you know, on the pulse of the community a little bit and we get their feedback and as we have those discussions, you know, we, we talk about what are we going to do next, so.
Ryan, and maybe this is for you, Dr. Pierce, but, um, so on here, you show the schools eligible for SCAP funding and potential bonds down the road.
I'm sorry?
Can you go back to the.
Oh, certainly. This one?
So, yeah, so these, these have been identified as being eligible for SCAP funds and possibly the next bond. At what point do we dis, like, when do we discuss what that, like, who, who starts that process? Is, is the team that you mentioned at the beginning, is that kind of who goes through the first part of the bond stuff and like makes recommendations or is that a, is that an in-house?
It, it starts with a study session really with the board.
Okay.
And so, you know, just on the timing, like, why we're not starting that conversation now is, as we've talked about previously, uh, levy.
Yes.
You know, priority for 2026 and then post-levy, looking at what would be the timing for a bond? What's the scale? How many projects could be included? You know, what's the, what are, what are the rates? All of those things.
Yes, okay, so that would start in a study session into.
Yeah, high board presentation, study session, you know.
Yeah, and you fast forward several years, you know, our numbers off to the right there, our calculations will, will change hopefully with, you know, with enrollment, they'll, they'll hopefully be going up, correct? So, um, because that'll be part of consideration, are we building a facility that's the exact same size? Are we gonna be adding, you know? I don't know, some of our facilities are pretty good size. They, they may not need an addition. They just need, you know, basically just need a new facility. Sometimes what's scary with the older facilities is what's in the ground, right? What can't you see? Esthetics are easy. It's what can't you see? And that's, that's what kind of keeps us up at night, so.
And Ryan, you may have touched on this, but I think, you know, one, another conversation with the facilities executive committee is about standard. And, you know, i- is it a priority? And the facility executive committee believes it is.
Correct.
To ensure that there's a common standard in terms of amenities across schools. Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, and thank you for pointing that out, Tracy. In fact, there's a column in this table that reflects that. So, not, not only are these, these facilities coming eligible for SCAP funding, but we've identified some, I don't, I don't want to necessarily say deficiencies, but some, some spaces are lacking when you compare it to, uh, like our most recent built, oh, or, uh, middle school. For instance, Highlands doesn't have a second gym. You know, Chinook, Desert Hills, they have two gyms. You know, Chinook, Desert Hills, they have two gyms. Horse Heaven Hills has a second one. It's a little smaller, you know, Park has a second one. So, you know, as a district, in, in, you know, collaboration with the facility study committee, you know, we believe the two gyms is our standard. So when we look at these, these, these facilities, what, it's not only are they due how much square footage, but also what are they deficient in? You know, and admin spaces are always growing.
Cafeterias.
Yeah.
We want all those things to have the same amenities across the board.
Same amount of gyms, multipurpose room and gym, not a shared, like the Washington Hawthorne, they basically have a gym that also serves as their multipurpose room, whereas our newer elementary, Richview, that really anything since 2010 has a separate gym and a separate multipurpose room. So that is, you know, a district standard that, that we're seeking when we have opportunities to, to impact these facilities.
Just out of curiosity, why is Horse Heaven Hills, it's eligible for funding, but it's a low priority? Is there a specific reason? Is it?
Yeah, so, so what I think, so Horse Heaven Hills is a much newer facility in comparison to the others up there. You know, it trails them by nearly 30 years, obviously. We have been making investments even in Horse Heaven Hills since its original construction, flooring, roofing, things of that nature. We feel that Horse Heaven Hills, don't look at it as not a prior, not a priority. It's just when you compare it to the older facilities, it doesn't have as many needs. We feel that Horse Heaven Hills is a, is a great example where you can make targeted improvements. HVAC, lighting, things that aren't full-scale.
Paint.
You know, raise the building or gut the building and, and, you know, put a lot of money into it and really burn SCAP funding because that's, that's the other side of it. What you don't want to do is use your eligible square footage on a project and not really do a lot. Does that make, does that make sense? Because there isn't a lot to do. So Horse Heaven Hills just makes sense as, as something that we can target with smaller projects and meet all their needs.
So just, so for people who are listening, what it sounds like is, is you're trying to be fiscally responsible. You're looking at projects that maybe would have limited benefit, but would be very expensive. And so you're saying, look, let's be financially responsible here and not just spend money because we can't.
Right, so if we were to do a project, well, let's say if we were to do lighting improvements, flooring, and some interior painting at a Horse Heaven Hills, and we used our SCAP funding. Well, now, that, we got to wait another 30 years before we can do anything with that site. You know, and that point, it's 60 years old, and there's, there's infrastructure issues. There's, it's just easier if we can target it with, with, you know, some very specific projects, HVAC, flooring, lighting, things like that. We can, we can save that square footage so that we really have that flexibility to visit whenever we want to. We're not, you know, we're not stuck to that 30 years.
And I think that's some of what, if you look at some of these other schools that were built originally, like in the 60s or 50s, but they've, they were renovated. I think some of what we've grappled with is, was that renovation?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, bringing it up to a certain standard.
Yeah, wasn't added.
And we don't want to kind of repeat that where you're.
Learn from our mistakes.
Yeah, I feel like Park is a good example of that. You know, you, you look at Park and to know they had work done in, I think it was '05 or, what's it say up there? '99. So, and just to look at that, it's like, what did we really get in '99? Like, you know, it just doesn't seem like there was a lot done to it, but we burned the square footage doing it. Which, you know, if you're trying to, to fund a project and not have a lot of local funding, I mean, that's one way to do it, right? But I just, I just think it has way more negatives than positives.
It perpetuates this have and have-not, you know, across the system when you look at our facilities. And we don't want to repeat that.
Exactly. And even if you visit it, I mean, it's just tough because you visit Washington Hawthorne, you know, they've had new flooring, they had new roofing, they've had HVAC. Like, these schools aren't, it's not the word, what, what, at this point, those schools, it's what you can't see. That, that's what it comes down to. It's the infrastructure, the plumbing, the sewer, things like that that can, you won't see until it's a problem. And that's, that's what we worry about, and that's why a lot of times those facilities that old, you know, typically are demolished. And we build something that more fits how we teach, you know, in this modern era, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you to the community board as well. Thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
All right, up next, we have the 2024-25 capital fund budget update. Vic?
I got you.
He's like a walk-up song.
You know, I agree with that.
We do. We need a walk-up song.
We need a walk-up song.
I could have a bunch coming up now.
Do that in your last walk-up.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, I did go to a lot of those elementary schools just in the last week, and they look good. So I'm asking Ryan, what, we don't need to do anything, but it's all right. They do look good. So a capital fund, just another update, you know, we're getting down to the final days here. The next board meeting will pretty much finalize the general fund and, and be kind of done until the June public hearing. But right now, another capital fund update here, no real decisions, just kind of going back over some things. From the last meeting, there were some changes. So we have the TRITech modernization funding, $45 million grant, so we have to put that in the budget. So some updated revenues there. We've drawn down some Ridgeview money, so that's a little updated. And then we did get a bill for the Riada, our share of the site work is about $1.5 million. And, you know, that's where we're adjacent to some development, and we're discussing, we sent some comments back. So it's possible we might have to pay that this summer, but they have to get back to us. We requested some more information, but it came in about right where we thought. And then there's some expected costs for the Ridgeline Drive road that's behind Desert Hills, adjacent there. And also the Iron Horse site, that's a site up behind Canyon Lakes, up behind that, that dam up on top of the hill. So there is a residential development going in up there, and our engineer's been working with them saying, you know, there's going to be some roads there adjacent to our property in that residential area. So that could be in the next year or two also. And then TRITech owes some money for that 10,000-square-foot building, and we probably will put a placeholder in there to budget some money that they would transfer in from the general fund. So here we are, projected 23-24, I'll touch on that a little bit. And so we're projecting about $10.2 million a match, a pretty good chunk of that is Ridgeview. And then, and this is the same match money, when you do a bond, you get, you know, a certain amount of match on those projects. About $400,000, we're expecting in '24-25, the remaining Ridgeview. And then down here, technology levy, we just offset, you know, we have the levy that's approved, the tech levy by the voters, and we just put an offset here. I'll be meeting with Ron Cohen to see how much he will really be spending this summer, but usually he gets that list to me, and we do knock out quite a bit in the summer. So there's no guarantee that'll be 4.3 million. If it doesn't get spent this summer, then it gets pushed forward. And that's about it there. We expect TRITech maybe to transfer in about $1 million from the general fund, and that'll get finalized in August. And they still would owe a couple million dollars back to this fund. '24-25, so down here, technology levy again, and that's just offset with the money that comes in. And then here's the core modernization, $6.6 billion based on the cash flow of what they're going to be spending next year. Down here, about $6.6 million, mostly architect-type costs. And I looked at that again a little later today, and that might get changed to about $8 million just to be safe in case construction starts a little bit early and we get some bills. But it would just be an offset, you know, 8.2 million in the same down here. And then the rest of the cost out a couple of years, that project's going to take a few years to complete. But the bulk of the cost would be in '25-26, in a couple of years out. And then here's the adjacent site work for the infrastructure, the placeholder here for a couple million dollars. If we spend the $1.5 million we owe on Riada, that would happen out of '23-24. But it's possible, you know, we may not get to paying that until '24-25. That's why generally we put about $5 million contingency every year into this budget, just for things that come up. You know, maybe some costs that we expected in '23-24, you know, they didn't get paid, get paid in '24-25. Could be some bigger projects coming up where there's an emergency and we have to spend some money. So that's why that placeholder is here. Generally, every budget, it'd be a $5 million placeholder. You know, it doesn't run out here, it's just kind of year to year. And so we're still looking pretty good in the capital fund. We want to keep about $25 million down here for the next bond. And we don't know when that bond will be. As Ryan, he discussed, you know, it could be, we want to do the levy first. That's in 2026. Then you can kind of gauge where the public's at. So somewhere between '27 and, you know, the 2030, you'd be deciding on, hey, can we run a bond? And it'd be nice to have about, you know, $25 million left in here, which is pretty doable. Still knocking out some projects, $1.5, $2 million a year. And that money that's left in there could be applied toward the bond. Most of the money is, is from the 2019 bond, and, you know, it was pretty much earmarked to build another elementary school, a new one. We don't have the enrollment to do that. So, you know, we can apply for some other things. And then the $1.5 million, that's based on projects that, I'll go through the list here of some things that we're looking at. And to be honest, this list, it grows all the time. Ryan has a list of more things. But just to give you an idea and maybe review that, we talked about the site infrastructure. Earmark 2 to 3 million, 3.5 million for that, just so you don't lose track of that. That's, that's money that's going to eventually be spent. The Kamaiakon gym over the locker rooms, that area, that's the next priority for a roof. And it's probably going to be $500,000 to $1 million to knock out that whole, you know, the gyms and the locker rooms. So we would go out to bid for that next spring and see what that looks like and try, try to get that done. And we have been using a TRMCO, they do a surface-type thing, and they're part of a state contract. But we really should get out and do a bid to see if the TRMCO is competitive or not. So that would be on the list there for next year. Some other things, we were always looking at HVAC controls and things. Kamaiakon does need their controls upgraded. We'll get an estimate for that. Whether that would happen or not, we'd bring that back to the board. And then we have the paving going on this summer. It's a great bid there. We expected $1.5 million, going to be $750,000, so we can knock out a lot of work with that. And then there's a few other bad areas, evaluate next spring and see how things look. That would be brought back to the, to the board. IT server room, there's, in the summer, the system has a hard time keeping up, so we're trying to put in a backup system this summer. So if that system does fail, there'd be another system there, it'd be a kind of an outside split unit on the wall. Equipment, always looking at equipment, and we are looking at, we have a print shop. We could probably be put off getting a production color copier. A lot of the buildings have copy machines, they run color on it, it's expensive. We think if we could get one out at the print shop, we could save the building's money and also use that, that color copier to, to an advantage for a lot of things. And the grounds equipment, always looking at some, some equipment to create some efficiencies there. You know, if we have the big mowers and stuff, we can do a lot more with less down. So we are looking at that too, grounds. I don't know if you've seen the big mower that's pulled by the tractor, it's our only unit. And if it breaks, breaks down, we're kind of in a bad situation. So, so we're reviewing that, and that would cost about $100,000, and we're trying to get some quotes for that. Another area that's irrigation, playground area, Lincoln, I don't know if you've been out there. It's been a problem for quite a while. The water table's low, the pump doesn't get the water. We need to tap into KID, so we're going to get some costs on that. It could be a summer 2025 project, but it is one of our worst elementary playground area sites. So if you go out there, I'm talking about, take a look, walk behind the school, you'll say, oh yeah, I know what he's talking about. So, so we'll be bringing some costs back for that next year, and it would be a summer 2025 project. Some other projects that are going on, East Gate, that was from last year, they didn't finish it, but they're finishing it now with the playground areas and fall service and the new structures there. Crosswalks, so we always kind of try to, you know, have some money available for crosswalk work. The city gets grants if they want us to match. Conway's a big project, should be fall 2025, that's adjacent to Westgate. And then Arthur Street, we have some issues there with the crosswalk, and we'll be looking at that by Kamaiakon. And then there's always the other one, I think we got an email about Southgate. Ryan works with the city, you know, he tries to point out the, the problem areas. The city kind of tries to get grants, and we can cost share with that.
So you should stop using gold for these crosswalks, I mean, 100 grand for these crosswalks?
Say what?
100 grand for this, for a crosswalk? It's crazy.
The Conway one's going to cost like, I think it's like, how much does that? It's six, six figures, and we just have to pay a little amount. But they're doing a sidewalk and everything like that. Arthur Street, hopefully that's on the high end, I put 50,000. Go ahead, but don't spend a ton of money.
Yeah, so, so one of the big, for the, for the crosswalks, you know, there's a lot of design goes into it. A lot of times with the flashing beacons, that is kind of a standard thing, and those units are, I mean, that's almost 20 grand you're in right there, just flashing beacons. For, because you got to bring power to them, install equipment. So that, that's, that's a big cost on when you, when you look at crosswalks. And there's also, even the construction itself, it's, you know, it's very labor-intensive, so you have to have traffic control. And there's just a lot of other things that have a tendency to add up, so.
So lots of items, and some of these smaller ones, they'll come out of the general fund. Scoreboards, we are looking at replacing, for sure, Southridge, that's the original scoreboard there at the football soccer field, and Lopier Field, lots of bulbs burning out on both those scoreboards. Reader boards are looked at every year. We knocked out a whole bunch. We don't have anything scheduled this summer, but they only last 10 years. For some reason, they fail. It's, it's very frustrating. They cost a lot of money. Ryan can go on and on about how I hit him up with why don't these things work. And then, it's not on the list, but I think, did you say you went out to MTS? Yeah, so MTS, the eventual plan is to reconfigure that. So food service, you know where they are, they want to be out on Kellogg. Transportation doesn't have enough room, they don't have meeting space. So there's a lot to that. I mean, we talked about getting some architects to look at it and, you know, spend some money on that. But there's not any money really to, to, to do the project yet. But the priorities are schools, so for the next three or four years, I mean, you want to keep that on the list. MTS does need.
That room where they're talking about nutrition going into, it's got 13 buckets below a pipe to catch the water that drips from the piping, so it's, I mean, it's going to be some.
It's going to be a big project whenever that happens. And generally, the facility committee, they deal with schools, you know, we keep them informed on some of these other things, but yeah.
Maybe we should add the other, you know, we should add those things to our list when we're looking at them so we can have a section on facilities in our schools, you know.
Yeah.
Because they kind of go overlooked a little bit, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, and TRITech kind of does their own, they have their own money, own thing too, but good idea. So Ryan mentioned some of those schools, and I kind of put this together. So we don't ignore those schools that are on the list or a little further down the list. We spent at least $6.8 million on those schools for the next bond, you know, over the past 10 years. You can see all the roofs, you know, even though we know, you know, Edison was on the next bond, it takes a while. So we've invested a lot of money, and it's not all listed on here yet. So when you talk about Horse Heaven Hills, you know, maybe that school doesn't need to be torn down. There's still more work to be done there, their lighting, as Ryan mentioned. You know, and with the lighting, there's all the ceiling tiles. I don't know if you've been in that building. It just needs some, some work inside there. So if we're going to wait that long, you know, they're not going to get a tear down. There's some things we've got, we have to do, and as you can see here, we, we do that. We try to take care of these schools. You go in, you know, Vista and Hawthorne, and you go in there particularly without kids, and it's in the daylight shining through, we've done a good job taking care of those schools. You can go to other school districts, those schools would be top of the line. But we do want to, you know, make them better, get them up to standard, and that's why another bond, you know, you get all the, the, the technology, doesn't have enough electrical to really handle a lot of that, the new stuff. The, you know, sewer. And by the way, for the capital fund, I think it was five, four or five years ago, Lincoln had a sewer problem. We had to tear up a floor, and it went down about six feet, and we had to spend $300,000 replacing the sewer line in that building. So things happen, and, you know, cross your fingers. So anyway, this where we're at, this won't change much from the, the budget in June that's going to get adopted. It's pretty much going to be the same. So we're pretty much done with the capital fund, and next time, we'll talk about the general fund and finish that up.
Any questions for Vic or Ryan?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, thanks.
Question for, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Something we, we've talked about the last couple of years, prior board, this board, we've talked about when we've done capital funds, facility stuff. And I, I don't know if it's, it's not on there, if it's part of another section, but we, we've brought up the idea or thought about the potential of Phoenix moving to Legacy's campus, right? For a couple of reasons. One, then that staff is all together, the students are together. We don't have people traveling to multiple buildings and stuff, potentially saving us some money there. Is that potentially somewhere else, or any idea, like, have we even thought about costs of like a portable to that site? So that, my understanding at Phoenix, roughly 45, 50 students, about 50% attendance. On, on any given day, we're sitting at about 25 students there. It just makes sense to kind of get all of our, our high schools and, you guys, like, get all of our kind of a project-based high schools and different, on, on the one campus, right? And then, this is my thought, and I know we've talked about it, but I just wanted to get you guys like, in the know, so to speak, but.
And just to even add on to that before you, I even, I mean, I don't know if they've ever even like merged Phoenix and Legacy, just like even more so, like, it's just Legacy, right? You know, and then, and still keep maintaining that project-based model and everything, but within, underneath the umbrella of Legacy.
Yeah.
Before Vic speaks to the facilities, I want to just speak to the program aspect. So you had mentioned we've got a new administrator this year, and one of the things we've really been working with him on, along with Matt and Rhonda in K-12, is to really do a comprehensive review of our choice programs to, to see where are the strengths, where are the areas where we could improve and provide service to students, particularly students who might be struggling and not in our system, that we can get back into our system and help them graduate. So there's a lot of work being done on that. In fact, we should probably schedule at some point sort of an update on, on where we are. Because right now, yeah, enrollment has declined at Phoenix, and there's some potential strengths to that program as well as Legacy to actually expand service to students, students who might not be enrolled in schools right now. And so there's a lot of program work happening. We want to focus first on the program work, because what we wouldn't want to do is, is move a program and then have a space issue. So the program work, we think, is first, and then determining the facility need. Now, and I think we have talked in ideally, yeah, I think we, you know, it would be great if we had all of these options available at one kind of big campus, still with distinct schools and programs, but it would be beneficial from an administrative oversight. beneficial from an administrative oversight perspective. And, and also, um, you know, there'd be some other potential benefits of easier students, like partially enrolling and endeavor for some online, and then accessing some of their classes through Phoenix, or project-based, or that kind of a thing. So those are the things that we've talked about, and right now, since we own that building, there's no cost benefit to creating space, investing money to, to, in a portables or something, and moving them, and then having empty space. Now, there's some other discussion about some of the parts of, um, the building that we own over there, and so I'll give you an update on that. But I just, I, I want you to know that we're looking at both the programmatic pieces, oh, and the facility pieces, and we kind of what needs to come first, and what, what needs to come next.
And I, I need to say something real quick, it doesn't fit with facilities, but I'm glad you brought it up, because I completely forgot to mention it in my board report. But is it possible to have a choice school presentation, like we have Tri-Tech come and present to us, we have Delta come and present to us? I would love for Mr. Stroke to come and present to us on the choice schools. I think that that would be a good way to keep it.
Yeah, that's great.
I, he said he didn't, so.
But we haven't done that, like historically, we have Delta come every year, and we have Tri-Tech, but we haven't really done a choice school presentation.
The one fundamental difference there is, is that we don't oversee directly Tri-Tech or Delta.
Delta's a partnership.
Both of those are partnerships, and so as kind of a partner, they're presenting to us. We don't have Kamaiakun or Kennerwood or, or any of them. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm just saying that that's.
I think you're right.
I understand the rationale for not doing it, but there's a, there's a huge benefit, especially for board members that don't have as much time to go and visit schools and get to know the program. It's a great way of understanding what's happening.
And I think especially as we're looking at potential program
Yeah.
modifications or improvements, then it's a good time to.
And I would say if we're gonna talk about making any dramatic changes, I would, I would like them to present what's going on, especially if we're making big, you know, policy or location or, or programmatic changes.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be a great idea to have somebody come in for them, but.
Yes, sir. Okay, so did you want the, the financial part of that?
Do you have it off the top, like, what a cost analysis would be, or just?
Well, no, well, we, we, Ryan and I, we, we had talked about that, and if you're gonna add, say, ten thousand square feet to Legacy, it, it's gonna cost you like five million dollars. And then you have to ask yourself, is, is five million dollars for a program with fifty kids, do you think the taxpayers really would want that? You know, so, so you really have to.
Are you talking about, are you talking about ten thousand square feet of portables, or ten thousand square feet added on to Legacy?
Add it on.
Add it on, okay.
Yeah, portables, you wouldn't need that too much, I mean, uh, so you really would have to try to sort of work that program, you know? And granted, you know, what Dr. Pierce said is absolutely right, you, you gotta kind of review everything before you jump into something like that. But in the end, you know, how much money do you spend for, you know, a small population when it's taxpayer dollars? And maybe you do look at, you know, you look at a portable or two or something like that, to how do you make that work?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, moving on. K twelve student goal report. Matt Scott, you are up, sir.
Oh, Matt.
You are up, eight thirty.
All right.
No pressure, Matt.
Lost slides.
And we have exec session.
Oh, we have exec session, oh, that's, even more pressure. All right, so, um, anyway, good evening. Uh, you'll notice that I'm a little raspy, I just wanna point out that my raspiness came after Dr. Pierce's raspiness, and I've been working with her on a lot of things, so I don't wanna cast blame, but anyway. So we come, we come on a student, um, we, we give a couple of annual student goal reports, um, one we give in October, um, and then this is kind of a continuation of that report, because the one in October really talks a lot about, um, kind of the strategies and things we're doing based on this data. Um, and it gives schools the opportunity to, um, engage in school improvement planning over this, over the summertime and over a few months. And then we kind of come in October and talk a little bit more specifically about what we're doing to try to move some of these numbers, but I hope to be able to give you some of that as well. Again, just looking at, this is an annual report, um, and we wanna highlight both, um, the, oh, I better do that, yes, thank you. Been practicing on the other, other way. So at any rate, we, uh, come annually, um, and we're looking at our student survey data, um, and then at attendance data, discipline data, and then we also wanted to highlight some strategies that we employed, kind of looking at some of the, um, improvements, because some of the data is lagging data, so it was data for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and obviously we're in the twenty-three, twenty-four. We also, in this year's reporter, including health, health use survey information, um, to give some follow-up information that the board requested. A couple of things that we, you may want to consider, um, are just kind of, are there some areas of particular strength, or areas of growth that the board would like to discuss? And, and are there, um, are there areas of efforts in which you'd like to see some additional focus? And I'll kind of leave that to you to decide how much of that you'd like to do. So, um, both of the, all the, this report is really focused on our performance indicators, or key performance indicators, on, um, the percentage of students who report that they feel safe, included, and welcome to school, and that comes from our student survey. Also, the students who are regularly attending school, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, um, and the discipline rate. Um, and we've had a lot of discussion around disciplines, so hopefully this will just give us some, some context for those discussions as well. In terms of that outline, we're gonna talk about each of those things, and then I know that there were some questions provided by the board, um, and so I'm hoping that I can intermix those throughout the presentation, but by the time we get to the end, if I haven't hit those, we'll have an opportunity to do that as well. So our annual, we'll start with the annual student survey, so the student survey is really designed to give us information, and give schools individual information to help guide their improvement efforts, because we know that, um, our goal around having students be safe, known, and valued, a big part of that goal is how students are feeling. The way you get that information is by looking at multiple points of data, but one of those is the perceptual data of the students. We use that data, um, some of the, so you will, you'll look at the individual school data, um, and the grade level data for the district that's available in the appendix of the slideshow. But if there's areas that are, that are low at particular schools, or if there's areas as a district that are low, those are areas that are oftentimes addressed through the school improvement plan. Um, and so we ask our schools to include within their school improvement plan a goal around their safe, known, and valued survey. So they would be outlining, um, strategies and, um, objectives for the coming year to address, for example, if they see that their, their percentage of students who feel that riding the bus is not safe, they'll put some strategies in place to try to impact that. And that is one of those pieces that I report back to you in October, and when I share those goals that the, that the schools have developed. As you know, the survey is administered to students in grades three through twelve. We, um, at the board's suggestion last year, this year, we developed a uniform administration guide, um, with instructions, and, um, vetted that with the principals, and so the elementary guide included really a question-by-question script, so we could guide that with examples, so that there was consistency for the students. The middle and high schools didn't feel like they needed a script, but they did get a set of instructions, um, that kind of explain the survey, what it's used for. And also, um, because we collect email, um, addresses, we didn't wanna, we don't want to portray that the, that the, uh, that the survey is anonymous, however, just kind of outlining that, because it's not that we go look for individual student results, but it does help us disaggregating it demographically. We'd rather, um, pull the demographics from what's in our school information system and not asking a student, a third grader, a fifth grader, you know, um, if they get free and reduced lunch, for example. So those are some of the things that we did with the, with the instruction manual, and I think that the instruction manual may have helped a little bit, as you see, we've had some improvement over the last four years in our student responses. So, um, this year, we had over ten thousand, uh, seven hundred from previous year, and so I don't know if just those instructions are making it a little bit more formalized, may have had something to do with that. We asked twenty-one questions on the survey, and so I listed them in those next two slides. We do it on a four-point scale of either strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree, and the survey is made up of statements, um, for the most part. There's a couple of questions in there that will then link into some other things, like, do you ride the bus? So we ask kids who ride the bus if they feel safe on the bus, we don't wanna get people who don't ride the bus giving us that information. A couple of things you'll see on the slide, there are some questions that are in red, those were questions we changed for this year. So number two, the question was, this year was, I'm happy that I go to this school, that replaced a question we've had on the, for a couple of years, saying that I wish I went to another school. And the feedback we got from principals was, you know, there's lots of reasons a kid might wish he goes to another school, maybe his cousins go to Lincoln, and he has to go to Vista, and he'd really like to go to Lincoln with his cousins. So we thought this was a better question, and so we, we changed that one. We also changed, um, the question about students, uh, or students in my, or the statement, students in my school behave safely. That question in previous years was, there's, there's, is there unsafe behavior that happens at your school? Well, any of us who've ever been in a school knows there's unsafe behaviors that happen, um, and it felt like that was just kind of an unfair question to ask, um, so we changed that one. The other thing you notice is there are some questions that are in italics, and I'll explain those in just a second. So there are twenty-one questions, um, there are five, six of those questions that we use, um, to guide us in terms of understanding and kind of, um, aggregating the data to determine, do we feel like students are feeling they're, they're safe, included, and welcome? Um, and so these questions were ones that we felt were fairly universal in kind of understanding. What, what we were asking the students, and they do kind of encompass both safety, um, and belonging, and how much they feel welcome to be at school, and so those are the six questions that we use, but all the questions are equally important to us as we go through the survey. But I wanna highlight just those six, um, as part of this presentation. And so this, we'll, this slide just kind of demonstrates to you the, the increases that we had. We, we're really pleased that we had, on five of those six, we had better outcomes, and we're looking at district percentages, and just for your information, one percent equates to about a hundred, a hundred and four kids. Um, so each percentage increase, that's kind of what we're looking at on a district level. Um, and the one area that did go down a little bit was safe riding the bus. Um, and so again, this survey closed at the end of April, it's brand-new data. Um, we're gonna be doing some work with our, with our school teams, helping them kind of get in and look, um, at their data to see what we can do, um, in regards to that. But we're really pleased with that, and as a result, we also looked at our, um, at each level to kind of see how they've done over the last three years, and we've seen that we had increases in terms of the percentage of students who, who answered positively on those questions.
Really quick, um, do we have any statistical analysis right on that? I mean, one percent differences or two percent, that may be, that may be valid, like a, an actual improvement or not? I mean, just usually, I, I'd like, I mean, it, it shouldn't be hard to do a quick statistical analysis to say, yes, that's a, that's a significant difference, get a P-value, to, to claim significance, so is this significant, or is this just a random variation that would be expected?
Right.
Because then it would help us know, are these, I mean, like, an eighty-three to eighty-four percent change? That might be, that actually might be a real change, or it might just be, hey, the normal fluctuations that you're going to find, and, and I guess it would help us determine, because, because I was looking through these, are, are we actually changing things? Or are we just seeing normal variations? And, and without any kind of, any, any kind of statistical analysis, we have no idea for starters, but even then, I mean, a one percent difference or a two percent difference, it's hard to get excited.
Right. Um, and to be honest, we haven't, we haven't done that much of that, I don't know if Dr. Pierce wanted to add anything to that, I mean, again, it's, you know, kind of data points that we use.
A P-value would take, I mean, literally, it's an Excel, you know, a single box on an Excel spreadsheet.
Right.
Number of people and their responses, I mean, I think it would make it that at least we'd get a little bit more understanding of whether there's any validity to, to the change.
Sure. Okay. Um, so this slide just kind of shows those last three years again, district-wide, um, in terms of that, that average.
Cause that would tell us that as a district, we haven't changed at all in three years.
Right.
So whatever we're doing isn't changing anything, right?
Sure. Take a look at that.
So, so I guess, to my question, what are we going to do? What are we going to do to change that? For three years, we've done something that, that hasn't worked, right? And we can all agree that we went from eighty-four to eighty-three or eighty, whoa, whoa, excuse me, I'm sorry, I lost that slide. We're not changing, so we're seeing the data here. We're talking about the data because it's supposed to drive change, it's supposed to drive decision-making. What are we changing? That's what I'd like to see, what are we changing in this presentation? What are we saying next year, this is what we are going to do differently? And I get each school is different, but, but we need to have, if you're coming to the school board with this data, it doesn't help me to show that we haven't changed in three years, it actually, that just really frustrates me.
So let me, let me speak to it a little bit, um, if you can, we can go back for a minute. So, um, what our process has been is, uh, we look at our data, and then we, and, and, yes, we have all the individual schools look at it, too, and that, that Matt's gonna talk more about the planning process. From a district level, you know, we're looking at the, the big data points, and as, I mean, this is one thing that we look at, student survey, and then there's lots of other data that we look at. And then there's a process that we use with the board, and, at the June retreat, to get your priorities. So like, you've seen data, you see where we are, you see where we are in terms of those, uh, in, indicators that the board has said, yes, these are the indicators. And we get that feedback, and then if you go to the next slide, that informs, okay, like, is this an area that we wanna focus on? We need to invest money here, do we need to invest new program here? What is it that we need to do? So that's how we come up with our objectives. And I know it's not, it's not an exact science, it's, it's, it, it's not, you know, and we can't cause the least, say, oh, because we implemented school safety officers, it did or didn't make a difference, so let's keep doing it or not doing it. I mean, it's a, you know, and it's even hard to make some correlations, but, I mean, what our, our kind of basic premise is a continuous improvement plan, do, study, act. Look at the data, say, okay, what's the data telling us? If, if this is an area that we wanna improve, where, where do we think are some of those levers? Let's implement some things, and then let's see if it's, if it's making any difference.
So I guess my question would be, has any of the, do you guys feel that any of the things we've done over the past three years have moved the dial at all?
I mean, if you just, like, our school's safe, I, 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 you know, I mean, I'll let the board, um, you know, knowing that our big goal is stated there, and that one data point that we look at in kind of analyzing that big goal is, what are students telling us? Knowing that, you know, we've got students leaving and coming, you know? I mean, I'll let the board, uh, maybe answer before I answer.
You know, I'm gonna talk about discipline, but I, I think that's maybe potentially coming up.
Well, I just, I, I guess that's the question. Do we feel like as a district, are we, I, I mostly, I mean, I guess that's the whole point, like, we should be, our, our job is to oversee strategy, right? Big picture.
Your, your job is to say what you want. I wanna see ninety percent of students reporting that they feel safe, known, and valued, and it's my job to do the how.
Yeah.
And my team. So if you, if you say, I want that number next year to be eighty, whatever, or ninety, then we're gonna, I'm gonna take that back?
Yeah, we have a goal that says it's supposed to be ninety, that was from the first page.
The target, yeah.
I guess, I guess what I would offer, I mean, to, to your question, Dr. Miller, about, I, I think there's a variety of things that schools have employed, um, I mean, a variety of things we've employed. So for example, um, within our transportation department, we have an individual who's really there to help with training drivers and helping drivers with student behavior on the bus. That, that's, that's a, a strategy that we've employed to try to address bus safety. Those principals at all of our schools employ different strategies for trying to help, uh, help their students feel like there is somebody who, an adult, a trusted adult at school, that if you feel like you need to talk to them, that you can talk to, because if you're in crisis or whatever. So they spend time with the students, talking about, what does that mean? Like, when we ask you about a trusted adult, what does that mean to you? And taking from the students the definition, so that they can say, oh, to a student, a trusted adult is somebody who's really available at lunchtime. All right, well, how can we be more available at lunchtime, for example, not that that was a hypothetical. So, I mean, there are lots of things, I mean, people have done, they've done, they've spent time with the kids on bus behavior as a result of this survey, saying, we really need to work on our bus behavior, and so they've made those kinds of efforts. So I think all of those kind of together, do they move that needle when we're looking at district-wide percentages? Maybe, maybe not, and I think that your, your suggestion's a good one in terms of looking at that. But I do think that, I mean, in answering that question, do we really think any things changed? I can just tell you that there's been a tremendous amount of effort on the part of all of our school staff to address helping kids feel safe, helping staff feel safe at school, helping them feel like they're, they're belonging, and, and really initiating some, some plans around that. So I, I think that there is good work that's happening that maybe doesn't.
Misrepresent what I'm saying, I, I, it's not that I don't think people aren't making a significant effort, but, but is the effort paying off? And that, that's what I'm asking, and that's why, you know, we talked about looking at the data, and this is just one data point, and, and there are multiple other data points. You know, for example, we're getting discipline and those kind of things, there are multiple data points here, but I guess my, in all of this data, our, our whole focus should be on, are we seeing outcomes change?
Yeah.
And, and that's where I'm, I'm concerned, when I see these outcomes for three years are relatively flat-lined, and, and it, it says either one, the data's, what we're, what we're surveying may not be that accurate, or it could be that. Or it could be that the efforts we're making, while they're well intended, aren't having the outcomes we're intending them to have. So, so we're not reaching the goals we want. Or, or it could be that, that this one number point isn't reflective of really what is going on. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, and so I, I guess to kind of put, put in, I guess maybe more perspective. So we're going to have an opportunity to get into that and say, this, this is, from this perspective, the board, this, this is what we're looking for, this is what we want and, and build into that. And so if this is the focus, then, then we can really dive in and do it. I, I don't know, you know, we've focused on multiple different things over the course of, I've been on the board, but I think that's where we're going to have an opportunity to do that. And I don't know if that's June or if that's.
And she mentioned at the retreat, again, I'm just saying, if we're having these presentations, to me, the point of the presentation is to say, hey, board, you asked us to get 90%. We didn't make it. Here's where we think that we can change to get to 90% to accomplish the goal that you'd asked us to do. Here's what we, well, first of all, here's what we tried. Here, here's what we think actually may have moved the dial, but it did, but, but we're not seeing the results yet. We need more time. Here's things we tried that we didn't think worked. And here are some things that we're going to try next year. That to me helps us know, I mean, just by coming back and saying, yep, we didn't make it, but we're going to go next year. As a board, I, it doesn't help me.
I, I think it's a little, because, because you weren't here for the first part.
Yes.
You're here for the second, you weren't here for the, the July part, I mean, the June part last year. So I get what you're saying. I also think it's a good opportunity. It's kind of like the conversation that we're having in the, the board committee on graduation rate. Are we going to fixate on the graduation rate? Because we can probably get that, we can make whatever number you want happen.
And I agree there, and that's not what we're shooting.
But might, that maybe not really what, it's like, and I want to lose like the forest for the trees, right?
But to my point there is, then why show us the number? If the number is meaningless.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's meaningless.
The board has very limited meaning to have a presentation showing all the numbers. It, it says that we're thinking these aren't meaningless numbers and, and they have some degree of significance.
But maybe the, maybe the target, and again, we're following right now the board approved target, right? But, but maybe, maybe it's a matter of the target. Like I wouldn't say, I don't think we need to, I, I think it's really important that we survey students. I think it's really important that we, you know, that that's one way that we get input from students directly and that we look at that data and we look for trends, we look for strengths, weaknesses, and we work with our buildings to say, you know, because it looks different from every building, right? We're aggregating it up to a district average. So there can be very different outcomes by building, just like there are with academic scores, right? And then it's like, so what do we do from the district level to help support like safety, things like that? And then what are the individual schools doing? And so sometimes I, I do, I do think, you know, is it, is it worth having a big conversation about one or two percentage points? Or is it worth focusing on the strategies? But again, how do we measure our success? And it's challenging in, you know, it's, it, in, in an educational context. So I mean, but these are good conversations that we should have.
Part of the conversation coming up too is, you know, how, how do we abort expectation on the presentation, right? If there, if there's information that we feel like we're, we're not getting and we want, then I think we share that with Dr. Pierce. And then, and then that becomes like the, the piece that maybe we're missing, right? So going forward, we're able to get some of those.
We're getting data back, often showing that we didn't make a, we, we made, data did not achieve an expected goal. We're not given any of the details of why we did or didn't. And, and to be truthful, that's really hard to do.
Well, this setting alone is hard to do too, right?
Don't disagree, we got a few minutes, but I guess my point being is I'm less, I'm less. I, I care less about the data and more about what we're doing. So, and that's, that's, especially when we're seeing data that looks like there's no change. And that's because a degree.
Decreasing.
Yeah, well, I mean, it depends on.
Well, I think the element of it too is that we're measuring perception, right?
Yes.
And so it, it, we're, we're doing all kinds of things that are increasing the safety and security of the, of the schools. But we're also dealing with perception and the perception of adolescents and children. So it might be that we can make our schools the safest they could ever be, but the perception is going to continually be about 86%, 85%.
But then maybe that's something the board needs to say.
So maybe the fluctuation in the value.
If you're saying, look, we've tried all, or we're doing all these, you show me, we're doing all these things. Then I look at the numbers and say, okay, we can, like I said, the numbers are maybe not adequately reflecting in this case. I just, yeah, anyway, I'd be this dead horse.
Well, I think that's the case with, with quite a bit of data in education, to be honest. I mean, and we're going to see some others here just coming up. At any rate, we've kind of talked a little bit about how we inform our annual objectives around here. And so there were a couple, I, I highlighted these in October. I just wanted to re-highlight just comprehensive emergency management, because again, as we've gone through the year, there've been some things and we've kind of been learning from all the situations, just how, what we need to do to help guide our responses. We tend to really put a lot of focus into big events, but what we end up having a lot of is little events. Police activity that disrupts school in some way. Not something that's happening on our campus, but something that's happening adjacent or a campus. Disregulated students, these types of things. So we really want to make sure that we're completing our comprehensive emergency management plan to, to, for planning and communication around our updated responses, preparing more common vocabulary, so that we have a common vocabulary we're using for our response plans. And then also really clarifying our communication systems in, in, within the district. And so those are some things that are really designed, and they may not show up in the perceptual data of the students, but they're really designed to provide a safer environment in which kids can learn.
Do we have a crisis, do we have crisis teams still? I know at one point we had like three different crisis teams that we were able to maybe deploy to.
Yeah, we have our, yeah, our flight teams, yeah.
Are those our, are those essentially our counselors?
Counselors, yeah, there's some training and stuff, but yeah, they're our counselors. So if we have us.
It's like elementary, middle school, high school counselors, your team may go handle.
We, we deployed to Richland when they, when they had the shooting over Wiley. So, yeah, we've, and then just a quick update, I know that this information's been shared, but I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, our school safety officer program, I've got Officer Duty over there joining us tonight. We, we have nine, a total of nine safety officers that we've hired. Not all nine are on the job yet, a couple of them aren't available to start work until the next year. Every elementary school will have a safety officer, at least for part of the, you know, shared with another school. Homicide will have a full-time security and everyone that we hire after that will be a full-time, will enable us to go full-time. So we're really excited about that. And then Scott Child, our safety and security coordinator will be supervising the program and be full-time in his role and I can give him some more work to do, so it's going to be good. And then we will continue to have school resource officers in our, in our schools. I know they're hiring a couple to replace retirement and a promotion, but we got that process going. And so we will continue to have folks who are there to protect our schools and our students and our staff if the worst were to happen. As we talk about student attendance data, I just wanted to reiterate that this is, this is lagging data that I'm showing you. So it's 22, 23 data and that it's taken directly off of the OSPI website. And so one of the things that came up, I think it came up last year in the discussion, was kind of like, what's, what's up with the two absences per month? Where did this metric come from? And so again, it's part of the, it's, it's, it's part of the, the school improvement framework that was developed by the state of Washington in response to federal legislation on, on how we're meeting the needs of all our students. So that was defined, it's basically 10% of the school year, it's an average of two absences. You know, so we have nine months of school, you've got 18 days, that's 10% of the school year. And it really doesn't matter if those absences are excused or unexcused. So that's the metric that we use, because it's the metric that also influences whether schools are, are identified for improvement efforts or, or where they're identified for, for, you know, maybe needing some more assistance. And when we look at it, I, I kind of had some, I was, had some opportunity to talk to some of the principals, just kind of the, because it doesn't break out whether or not it's an excused or unexcused absence. And we, we don't, we, we, we focus kind of just on the, on the absences, because they're all impactful. But we also disaggregate and look at data. So our schools will look and say, okay, here's students who have maybe 12 or more absences in February or March. What of those students, what are those absences? Are those excused absences and what are the absences for? Oh, this person's participating in some, you know, club sport or they're doing national competitions or something and they've got As and they're doing fine in school. But those kids aren't as much of a focus as a student who maybe has 12 absences, or greater than 12 absences that, that is struggling. And so when I talked with the principals, just kind of asking them just on their mind, where, where are their absences? Are they dealing more with unexcused absences or excused? It was kind of a mixed bag. Some of the schools said, you know, we really, we focus on the unexcused. But some of the schools said, it's just really gotten really difficult, because parents excuse every absence. It's just like everything's being excused, because they know that that keeps them from, you know, being, going to, you know, getting a truancy petition or what have you. And it's also kind of a leftover from, from COVID. And we'll kind of see that a little bit and it's only speculation, I, you know, it's, it's, it's not necessarily what's caused it. But at any rate, that's how we're defining it. So as we look at the data for the 22, 23 school year, we had, you know, our data has, over four years' time, it's decreased. And, and, you know, the 2021 school year, that was when students were in hybrid. And so if they were, you know, on a computer screen or if they were engaged in some way, that was, their, their absence was, was, they weren't considered absent. And those rules kind of lessen. But we also sent the message over the last, those couple of years, that if your child's sick, stay home. And so what principals are telling me, that really hasn't changed. They get a lot of parents calling in saying, my child's sick and we're not going to send him to school. Whereas that just seems to have changed a little bit since COVID. Before COVID, we'd get sick kids at school all the time. We'd have to call the parent and say, you really need to come get your kid. But they, they've noticed that a lot, that it's, that that's happening and that they're just, and then, you know, they're just kind of the, you know, I speculate that potentially like during COVID, we kind of demonstrated the school attendance wasn't as important as it maybe it had been before. And I think that that's maybe, you know, still at work there, that it just becomes easier to take time off from school, because hey, we can always make it up or what have you. So at any rate, but what I wanted to point out is that the trend really does carry with, you know, it is, it is along the same lines as the state trend has been and for all intents and purposes, what we hear nationally and everywhere, it's attendance, attendance, attendance. So as we look though at the attendance by grade, what is interesting is you look at 22, 23 next to 21, 22, that all of our elementary, all of the elementary grades increased the percentage of students who missed less than two days. Every, every single one of them made, you know, some of them were maybe, you know, small changes, but they all improved their attendance rate. And all of our secondary schools' grades decreased. And that was just kind of interesting. I'm not necessarily sure what to make of it. I think, you know, as we look at those last four years, none of us really know what the answer is or what the reason is. If, if students left school and just didn't, you know, they, they just aren't coming back, if they're finding it easier not to come to school, what all the reasons might be there. If we knew what they were, we, we could probably, you know.
When does the data come out? So when will we, when will we see that?
So it's, it's, it's reported at the end of the school year. So like in, in, in March, we ran the data, data, just kind of looking, because we were talking about getting some more kind of, you know, warning system type of data. And, and we were, I did the calculation today, we were like 74% as of March, like the middle of March.
I'm curious, I'm, I'm interested to see what.
So, yeah, so it's, yeah. And so, and then the other thing that we wanted to do is highlight is, you know, again, we're required as part of, you know, kind of the data collection that we do to disaggregate by race and, and ethnicity.
And program participation.
And program participation, all of those pieces are required to disaggregate. And really just to show that it's not, they're, the decline in attendance rate is, is really pronounced for all kids. It's, there's nothing that's really different by, by race or ethnicity. Every, everybody's attendance has kind of declined over the last few years.
And that, the question came up about, you know, what, why do we look at the data that way? And, and it is like, we are required to do it. It is reported on the state website. And essentially what, what we're asked to look for and what we do look for is disproportionality. Is there, is there disproportionality in the data? If we look at special education students, are they disproportionately disciplined? You know, more than non-special education students, for example? And if so, why, you know, what, why, is there something that, that we're doing to create a barrier or to contribute to the disproportionality? It's kind of the gist.
I think we want to be careful about showing, particularly as we get into discipline, breaking those down by ethnicity or by race. Because I think we start to, if we're showing that data, then we're saying that we think that absences or discipline have something to do with, that race has something to do with it. Or at least asking that question. And, and to me, and then, and then you open the door to create narratives that are just wrong. For example, I don't think race is, has a factor in, in attendance. I think socioeconomics and other factors might, but, but probably not race. And I think we just want to be, we want to be careful not to create narratives that other people can look at and say, oh, this race is, is, is problematic. You see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And I, that's why, and again, I always say, is the information driving decisions or is it driving analysis? If it's not, just leave the slide out. Like I don't, I don't think the slide is helpful for us for the 10 seconds or three seconds it takes me to look at it. We don't need it as a board.
Yeah, and the data is available to publicly on the, on the OSPI website. And I think, you know, since there's, there's some policy language and things, I think our intent in showing it is, is assuring the board that we are looking at the data in the ways that we're required to look at it, because we are required to look at disaggregated data. Again, for not to say there's something wrong with certain groups or something like that. That's not, it's, is there, is there something in the system that may be contributing to a disproportionality? And, and often, I mean, there, there will be times where the state comes and says, you have disproportionality in this area. Explain to us why that is and what you're doing about it. So we don't have to include it in board presentations, but I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, maybe, no, I, I appreciate that you need it, but to the rest of the board, do you guys find it helpful? I, I just don't find it helpful at all in these circumstances.
I, I think, I think, again, it goes back to just presentations in general. I think we, we just chat through it, decide what we want going forward, X, Y, and Z. This is how this board wants it and then, and then we.
Sorry to bring up some of this.
No, no, I, I wish we could, I wish we could study fatherless homes. I wish we did, I wish that was a data point, because I think that's the biggest driver of anything.
And that's my point, I, I think that the data that we're looking at aren't drivers.
Statistically true.
Whether you're looking at socioeconomics or homes or any of those, those might be more likely drivers of attendance. You know, single parent homes that have workers, like actually, Brittany, just your point.
Yeah, I just, I just turned to Josh and I said, I bet I could guess why you see a change in sixth grade. And it's just because in sixth grade, kids now have devices and are old enough to be left at home. And so there's not as much, if I have a child that's borderline sick and they're an elementary student, I'm probably going to push them to school. But if it's my middle schooler who I can contact during the day and check up on and say, how are you doing? I'd be more prone to leave a secondary student at home.
And so again, if we had a data point that could show us, to Micah's point, this is a single parent home that helps us understand what's going on there and helps us perhaps understand how, how we can better serve those people. And that's why I'm saying, I, I think the data we're getting right now isn't very helpful. I mean, knowing that someone's Caucasian or so, or white, or someone is, is Hispanic, doesn't change any of the decisions we make on attendance, right?
There are, like though, I, I mean, I will just say, there are sometimes cultural differences and, and family expectations. And so, and because we're part of a larger system, right? We're part of a state and federal system. It's, it's the, you know, we, the, the, we're required to report out on these areas and collect data. Like we don't collect that data. And I'm not even sure we would be in, within our right to collect that data. So I mean, I think there's some constraints here that drive.
Yeah, I, I guess my point being is, again, going back to Gabe, maybe is that in our presentations, let's focus on what, what drives decision making.
Yeah, I think that's where we want to head, right? We, we know we got a, a retreat coming up.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll talk through some board stuff.
I'll quit, I'll quit making comments.
And, and then we'll adjust, adjust from there, how we want to do that.
Okay, so I, I did include some information. So we're talking about what we're trying to do a lot in terms of trying to impact attendance. And I, I'll just be real honest, I mean, the attendance, we, we have very little control whether or not a parent gets their child to school on time or not. And all we can do is provide a really great product and a, and a really welcoming environment that is addressing maybe some of those barriers. But we do find that part of the barrier is maybe a lack of understanding of the effect of attendance and how poor attendance does have a negative effect on school outcomes. And so a lot of this information is that we've really tried to do, and as I talk to schools about their efforts, it's really been about. And as I talk to schools about their efforts, it's really been about, how do we get this information to parents at an earlier time? Not waiting until the attendance has become a chronic issue, but doing it at an earlier time. How do we get the student with poor attendance and poor grades as a focus in front of a school assistance team to try to determine, are there some different interventions? And so this is really, it's, it's what's required within our procedure. It's what's required within state law. But really trying to make sure that we're, we're providing all those notifications and ability to connect with families to determine what are the barriers to their child attending school regularly, particularly when it's having that, that impact.
So, sorry, do we, I'm not familiar whether or not this is a common practice of the school district or not, but do we ever do a campaign, so to speak? Kind of reeducating and recommitting parents to any number of aspects of the district? I mean, it, it's great that I've notified whether or not my child's in school, but if I haven't bought into the fact that it's important that they are there, I don't know that it's going to change my behavior much.
Yeah, we've done, we've done a few different, and Brahman isn't here right now, but I mean, I know we've done a few different points of emphasis. I know that the schools are doing pieces of emphasis. I think Kamaiakin did something around March Madness and they were doing a real awareness campaign around and encouraging students to be, be at school during that time. So I think there's bits and pieces of that that do occur.
So real quick, can you high level walk, walk us through an elementary school attendance? How does it work? So my son's in fifth grade, hypothetically, fifth grade, doesn't show up Monday, doesn't show up the second, next Monday, doesn't show up the next Monday. So that's three excused absences, right? Because I'm, I mean, at what point are we sending letters home? At what point are we holding parent teacher conferences? Because this just talks about unexcused, which goes back to your point. Like, I mean, every time I get a notice, I just throw a little known in there and it's excused, right?
Yeah. So, so elementary, elementary students, according to procedure and law, elementary students are required, I mean, there's required to have some sort of a parent conference, either by phone or what, if, once they get to five excused absences. I mean, excused or unexcused, that five absence piece is something unique. For, for the school year. Like, it's, it's, you know, so again, so yeah, so it's, once they get to five absences. Again, it depends oftentimes with our schools, like, what are those absences for? If we know that a student has gone on a family trip for a week and they've missed five days, we're not going to necessarily say, okay, now come in for your attendance meeting. I mean, we know what's going on, but this is really about, you know, hey, the student's been sick frequently over the course of the month and has already missed five days. Are you running into problems with your child not wanting to come to school? Is there school avoidance? So there's that piece. Obviously, we do the, you know, every, every absence, you should be getting a call at night and saying, well, your child missed today. And then it kind of depends, and I summarized it in here, but it's, you know, basically, we're looking at, at, at absences within about a month period of time. If you get to seven unexcused absences, then, you know, between the fifth and seventh, we need to have a meeting to kind of just talk about the attendance. And then if we get to the fifteenth, then we really should be putting together, before we get to the fifteenth absence, a behavior plan, for lack of a better word. Like, how are we going to make sure we're trying to get this taken care of? And then after that fifteenth, that's when the school can choose to do a truancy petition. And again, they can, they file that petition with Benton County and then they refer them to community engagement board. And they have to do the community engagement board first before that truancy petition can be acted on by, by the truancy.
I don't, I don't want to, I guess, beat this up here. But I, I think, I think honestly, if a family decides they're going to take a vacation and miss five days, I still think we should send them a letter. I still think they should have to come in and meet with the school and say, we, like, we understand, right? But I think, I, I mean, school events are one thing, but if we really want to focus on attendance, one, like, why are you, what's, you know, your kid's got to be at school, but now you're taking vacations and now Susie's missed a whole week of whatever.
Right.
I just, I don't know. I just, yeah, anyways.
Well, and I, you know, and I do think, yeah, and I do think that there's, I think we had, we'd provided some information to the Tri-City Herald a little while ago about just kind of, you know, attendance and the issue that we have with attendance. And there is an aspect of it, and as I was talking with the principals today, you know, it used to be a lot more punitive in terms of how absences and truancies were dealt with. And that went away. And it didn't matter for all the students because I can remember as a middle school assistant principal, going to the truancy court on Fridays and being there for the same kids, we, you know, every, every session. But there were some kids for whom, and some parents for whom that made a difference, that they didn't want to have, that there was a deterrent effect to that. We just don't have that. And so I think that we do struggle sometimes to say, okay, what's going to have enough teeth to deal with that? But to your point, I think that we do, and within our procedure, I'm just remembering now, I mean, it's, we do have some, some things we would want parents to do to basically request that time off. It's like, hey, we got this, you know, and, but I don't think our principals feel very comfortable telling a family, no, you can't take that vacation because your child's struggling in math.
No, no, I get that. I'm just saying, here's your letter. Here's the process.
There's, you're, you're part of it because you reached the.
Because you chose to take a five-day vacation and we're not treating you any different than someone who's been sick for five days. You've missed five days, right? So I, again.
And I think, and I think that would really fall into that fifteenth cumulative absence because the fifteenth cumulative is really excused or unexcused absences. So if, if they had five days excused absent, they maybe wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't, I mean, a student in elementary would warrant that, but I don't think within the law.
I mean, I think the other thing is just hard, like, the schools are wanting to maintain a good relationship with families. And, you know, if you, if you reported to the school, I'm taking my child, you know, and it, and it can feel kind of combative, right, for the school to send something to the family. I, I mean, I get what you're saying, but it's a lot of this, you know, there's, there's kind of a tension here about the rights of the family and, and if it's a known thing versus the, a different situation.
And unfortunately, I'll be honest, I don't know the data on this. I don't, I don't, I don't spend much time in education data and education research, so this might be helpful. Is there any data that shows, that shows the correlation between, for example, scores and attendance? Or can, we can say, hey, if they're missing two days in a month period, you know, if they miss more than that, then we see a significant decrease in scores or. The whole, the whole reason I say this is, is because I have talked to parents and I can, I can appreciate it where they say, yeah, I miss a day, it's not a big deal. It doesn't affect anything. And to be honest, I can't tell them that it does or doesn't. You know, and, and I think going to the, you know, campaign or things like that, if we could show parents and say, look, missing a week of school has the same impact as, you know, can expect to drop your score, your, your, your annual review score, your star test score by five points or 10 points. Then all of a sudden, parents are like, oh, maybe I should just do that during spring break and not the week before.
Yeah, I think there's probably broad studies.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, just, just broad, general, it doesn't have to get too deep into the weeds. But that way, when we're going to, talking to parents, we can help frame it in saying, look, this is the impact of multiple absences on your kid based on what we, based on what we see. And I think you'll drive decisions more and, and help parents see the impact.
And those kinds of questions about the impact are the, are, are, those conversations are the ones that are really kid by kid? Because that's the other thing. It depends. There's going to be broad studies, but you're going to have one student who can be gone an entire week and be fine. You could have another student gone a day and it's almost devastating. So it really depends. It's very situational.
Truth be told, I, I missed more than 15 days in my senior second semester.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the policy is the policy.
Right.
Regardless of the state vote, in my opinion, regardless of a student going on vacation for five days or a student sick for five days, if the policy's five days, you should get a letter.
I will add, I still got straight A's my second semester of my senior year, so.
Sorry.
And just really quickly, Dr. Miller, to that point, one of, one of our high schools on the March Professional Day, they spent some time looking at grade distribution in each of their departments for a variety of factors. They were looking, you know, to kind of say, like, how are multilingual students doing? Or, you know, but they also looked at it through the lens of attendance. And so they, they, they looked at grade distribution based on whether a student missed to that point less than 12 days or more than 12 days. And they found a really strong connection to the outcomes being poor for students in their classes. And their main question was, okay, how do we, how do we communicate this to our parents? How do we communicate this to our students that your, that your attendance is really impacting your ability to pass? Science, which is a core graduation requirement, is now you're going to set you back, so.
Could you maybe get that data, but pare it down from not just 12? I mean, how hard would it be from 12 to, more than 12 or less than 12 to maybe like, you know, zero to two, two to four, four to six, six to eight, 10 to 12? Because again, going, if you can tell the parents, like, for example, when you get the robo-call that says, your son was absent from Kamaiakin, and they don't even say it right, Kamakayan High School today. And you could say, we'd like to remind you that absences have been shown to affect grades by 3% for each absence. Something along those lines. All of a sudden, it's not just, hey, your kid's gone, but it's also reminding them of the impact of the kid being gone. Just, but having that number would be helpful for us. And because I think that's awesome that they're looking. That's, that's what I'm saying, looking at that data. And that's, that's driving decision.
Yeah. Okay, so, discipline, I'm reminded, our goal is to keep the reports to 10 minutes, so. So, so on discipline, again, it's, it's the 2223 data. And, and we're looking at that. And the discipline rate is really determined by the number of students who received an out-of-school suspension, exclusionary discipline, so at least one day, divided by the total number of students we enrolled over the course of the year. So in the 2223 school year, our attendance rate was, or our discipline rate was 4.7%, which was down slightly from 2122. So we had about nine, we had 929 students out of 19,780 that had enrolled during the course of the year who received either a short-term suspension, a long-term suspension, an emergency removal or an expulsion. And so that's where the data, that's how that percentage is figured. As we look at kind of the trend data for that, you know, again, 2020, 2021 was very low because the kids weren't in school from, from March until the end of the year. And everybody will tell you that spring is the time when behavior comes challenging. And so at any rate, that's, that's kind of comparing it to the state average. And that's been fairly consistent over time is that we're slightly above the state, state average. What I want to really stress, and we stressed it in other presentations too, you know, just be, we want to, we want to, we want to lower the percentage of, of days that students are missing based on discipline. That's our, that's our goal. Not that we don't want to discipline students, not that we don't want to have consequences for behavior because just, we just talked about attendance and how important attendance was. You know, if we remove kids from school, that research has shown that, that it does not affect behavioral change and it really is detrimental to students. And so that's the reason. We would never say to a school, no, if you can't suspend this student because it's going to impact our data, that's not how it goes at all. And you'll see that in some of the school by school data because you'll see discipline rates that increased over the course of last year. And sometimes it just doesn't, it doesn't follow things that we can really correlate to. We also look, so this is by grade level. Obviously, in elementary school, we remove students far less than we do. And we have the, in, you know, in many cases, an inability to do that based on law. And our middle school years tend to be the years where we have more problems with that.
Am I looking at this right? So essentially, one in 10 kids in eighth grade get expelled, suspended or spend time out of school? Or is it, or can like one kid be counted multiple times?
I think it's instances, right?
It's, the, the discipline rate is, is, is one, is, is based on a student who experiences at least one day. So you might, you might, you're only going to get counted in there once.
So if you have 300 kids, you will have 30 of those kids who have been suspended?
Uh, well, at our, at our eighth grade, we're talking about eighth grade total. So that's going to be a total of, of across five, five schools. I mean, so it's.
1,800 kids. So let's say 1,800 kids. So 180 of those kids were suspended?
For at least one day.
For, for at least a day?
That's crazy. Wow, okay. I, I just, I, yeah.
So what the data is not going to show you, it's not going to show you necessarily the breakdown of what kids were suspended for. That's not been something that we've ever reported and we certainly could look at that. We have the data and, and certainly what we look for, and what I'd shared in October was that we wanted to work with our school principals. Our, our, our discipline policy, 3300 Regulation 3, is our disciplinary matrix. And you could go there and you could see, these offenses are ones that would, that could be suspended for. And it kind of gives you an idea. But most of the time, I mean, it's fights, it's assaults, it's gang activity, drug or alcohol possession. I mean, those are kind of the things that, that are, that are driving. And then, you know, more serious from there, we've had, you know, dangerous weapons and those kind of things. So what we do is we look at those, obviously within our schools, to see where we need to deploy resources and those types of things. But they just hasn't been part of this presentation to get into that level of detail. And then again, just kind of looking at the race and ethnicity piece along the same lines as we do with the attendance. And I, and I, and I will say that when we look at, you know, particularly within special education, that is a place where they will say, you're disproportionate for African-American students who are special ed, being, being disciplined. What is your plan to address that? And so again, they, you know, they are looking at those types of things. And we did have a significant decrease in that over that period of time for, for our Black or African-American students. Again, not that we're not, that we're excusing behavior, it's that we're trying to do other things rather than keep kids out of school when, when it's possible. So that's just a summary of those three indicator points that we talked about at the very beginning that are part of our performance indicators.
One more thing, again, just going back to those numbers, because some of those numbers, I, I think most people would find fairly striking. I mean, like I said, when I first looked at them, I, I wasn't sure I was reading it right. Because like I said, in a 300 kid, there's 300 kids in a class, 30 of them are going to get suspended that year or expelled. Is that predominantly in a couple of schools or is that, is this, for example, let's just look six, seventh, eighth? Because that's, those are where we see the biggest numbers. Is that predominantly skewing in a couple of the schools, particularly socioeconomic or those kind of things? Or is it, those numbers we see across the board at all the schools?
There are, there are variations in it. And the, and the individual school data is, there's some slides on the individual school data for their discipline rate.
I see it in the appendix.
On the appendix, I think. It should be on there.
I didn't see individual schools in the appendix.
Okay, if there's not, we can, we can get that.
Easily get it. It's on the OSPI website.
It was intended.
I mean, just in general speaking, is, is certain schools have a high, high rate and then other schools have a lower rate? Am I?
Yeah, there, there's variability amongst the schools.
What's that? 141?
Yeah, that's this slide.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. I couldn't, I didn't find it. Thank you.
Okay, and then just really quickly on the Healthy Use Survey, we gave, I, I did a presentation earlier this year on Healthy Use Survey. So this is kind of just some, some information just to recap that. Just kind of who, different agencies that are using the information from Healthy Use Survey. The goals behind it are really, again, just about delivering information to kind of inform the development of, of strategies, taking a look at trends and patterns amongst adolescent health, guiding policy formation. And then also, what the big part is, and I'll kind of go to the next slide on this one, is, is we've got partners through Key Connections, the ESD, Washington Traffic Safety Commission that are, that are using these, these results for either development of programs. So some of you may be familiar with every 15 minutes. They changed that program to Teen Target Zero, and it was really used to educate youth on substance abuse, DUI, overdose prevention. So they, they use that information to target those programs. And then, you know, our student assistance professionals that we contract with ESD and we have partnership with them, a lot of, a lot of those professionals are funded out of grants that you, that require the, the grantee to, to, you know, administer the survey. So there's some ties in there. And so those are some places here locally and how they use our Healthy Use Survey. The next slide breaks down by grade, you know, the percentage. I think, again, it's, you know, notable that, you know, we had 48% of our 12th graders who took the, took the survey. Again, students can opt to not take it. They can opt to not complete the survey. And, and so again, just kind of giving you a picture of how many students in Kimmick School District. And there was a lengthy report that was a part of the board packet as well. And then there were just a couple of highlighted questions, but there's lots of questions in there. And this one has to do with substance abuse, kind of showing an upward trend with our students in regards to a couple of these alcohol binge drinking and marijuana use over the last, over, you know, across the, the grade levels. And then also highlights around bullying in school climate. So again, we're kind of, we try to correlate a little bit. How does this? So if we look at feeling safe during school and we look at the results for our students, like, you know, with our seniors, here, 75% said that they felt safe at school. On our survey, I think it was about 83%. So it was, it was right in there. And, and, you know, we kind of, you know, those are just some, some data points. I do think, you know, as we look at, it is interesting information to look at. I included a dashboard link so that you can kind of see that there's a tool to kind of easily navigate. This is information that's provided by county, though. It doesn't break it down into school. So it's really by Benton, you know, you can look at Benton County, you can select grade levels, you can go to topics and you can say, okay, how are students feeling about bullying and harassment? And you can look at that and it'll provide trend lines and it also indicates the break for COVID because I did interrupt the cohort measurement. And the reason, I think we talked about this last time, that they do six, eight, 10, and 12. twelve, is that those are the students who will get, they'll have longitudinal data on those students to see if those, those trends are differing for that similar cohort group. So that is a little bit about, I think, let me check. So that, that link is available. And then we had our questions, but I, I'll kind of see if we, I kind of talked about those things. And like I said, the, you know, really looking at actively changing the outcomes really is about our school improvement process. Melissa, you know, reminded me that, you know, we, we've done a lot of work with professional learning communities, and that's really about how you meet, meet the needs academically and behaviorally for students in your classrooms. And so that's all tied in there. But there's a lot of work that the schools are doing to, to impact those. I think I covered those things.
Oh, that, actually, that is one of the comments. If you can go back one. I forgot about that. So i- if you look, the lowest scores that we have are in feeling noticed when I'm good at something and proud to attend my school. And the only reason I wanted to point that out was, is we talked a lot about feeling a sense of loyalty and pride. And, and I think it's interesting that, that those are where we're, you know, from this, from these just subjective score tests, that's where we're struggling the most. And maybe as we look to the board, it's something we could focus, you know, that may be something we want to focus on, is that degree of pride for who we are. And I think they're probably, they may be correlated there. I don't know.
Sure.
Feeling noticed.
Yep.
Okay. I, I have two very quick questions and one to ask. And, and these are very specific questions. These are questions I got. In our elementary schools, are teachers allowed to room clear?
Are they allowed to room clear?
Yeah. So if there's a behavior issue in the class, is that the expectation is teachers would clear the room if they need to?
If they need to. Yes. There's no prohibition against.
There's nobody saying that you don't room clear because you're, you, we don't want to.
No.
Like, make this one child feel.
Would the teacher do, make that call?
I guess, maybe not the teacher.
Typically, the teacher isn't going to make the call. Typically, the way it works in elementary school is there's going to be a call to the administrator to come and help, because a student is doing something. In my, in my experience as an elementary principal, is a student was underneath the table, not following teacher's directions, distracting the class. Like, so that's happening. So you can employ strategies to try to get the student to come with you. But if the student is being very disruptive, and, and middle school, I had an example of a student who kind of lashed onto his desk and wouldn't move and was spitting on kids. But we, we, we decided the kids go to a different area while we worked with the student to get them out of the classroom. So that is, it's not, it is, it is, it is absolutely, yeah.
They don't have to leave them in there, leave students in there at the same time dealing with that.
In fact, I mean, it, it's preferable to forcibly removing a student from a classroom. We'd rather get the rest of the students out and deal with the student there than, than going hands-on with the student.
Are we, how about, and I think this is probably only in certain schools, but restraint and isolation? Are, is that, I know the state was dealing with that, but that's still, if you have to restrain or isolate a student.
We have, we have policy, we have policy on how that's to be done. We have requirements for, requirements to report it. Debrief after, yes. No, that has not been, it's not been something that's been prohibited from schools to be able to do.
And the, and the ask I have is, I, I would, and I don't know if this is just a, a, maybe it's a question at a principal's meeting or something, but I, I want to know what, I, I'm curious what percent of time they spend on behavior that's not documented. So, so, for instance, yeah, so I was, I was in a, I was talking with a teacher, and a student in one school was running down the hall and was like screaming profanity. So obviously, the administrator potentially is going to deal with that. That's not something that is going to get captured necessarily in an exclusion report or whatever. But I, I'm curious to know what our administrators, how much time they're spending on those type of discipline situations.
I can tell you a lot.
I know. And that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm curious. I want to know what that is, and then how do we, how can we?
Right. No, I'd say we can certainly.
So you may remember me like saying, can we like push the kid through these steps? That, that was, that was, that's like a really good example of like, of, you know, little Johnny's, we're doing whatever, going to principal, have to come back, come, you know, it's like, all those, if we, if we were documenting all those, that we just, that we just move him in the, in the discipline cycle quicker, right? And then, now we can actually do more, more serious action to, so yeah.
There, there are, there are going to be students that are, are going to be challenges to, to work with, who are going to be, you know, fairly constant. I think that our, you know, and we can certainly work, and I think it is a good question to talk with principals about, because what we wouldn't want is, we wouldn't want there to be a situation where the staff or the principal felt powerless, and like, well, I just got to put up with this all the time, and now I'm dealing with this behavior all the time. That should not be the way it's working. We have resources to bring to bear in terms of, you know, evaluations and referrals, and, and, and there is some, you know, some progressive things in terms of strategies to, you know, to try. And so if there are situations like that, and we come about them sometimes. I mean, we, we find out that, oh, this has been going on for, for three months. And we're like, well, why in the world wasn't there a call out to say, we need some help with this? So we really want that to happen, and, and not have our principals feel like, well, I've, I've been told that little Johnny has this problem, and I can't do anything. Because that's not what we should, that's not the message of each.
I hear that all the time. And I don't understand why I hear that. Because I feel like, aren't we all, don't we keep saying like, like, do it, do it, just get, like, do what you gotta do, and then, and then we will support you. Like, I, I, I want every teacher to understand, like, we will support them. They need to do what they gotta do. I mean, one kid sucks up all the oxygen, all the kids aren't learning, you know? And that, I feel like that happens too much, because the teachers feel, or whoever feels like they just can't discipline. And we do have their backs, like, so if they, if they're not disciplining, they're not, either not hearing it, or it's on them because they're not doing it. I don't know what's going on.
Right. There might, there might be, maybe, you know, you know, you, we, we share something here. And as it works its way through, maybe it gets a little diluted towards, towards once it gets to the administrators.
Right, right.
Again, we want the administrators to run their school, discipline kids, how, like, we're not telling you not to discipline kids. So you discipline kids, make sure your teachers are safe, make sure you're supporting your teachers. And, and you're doing that, that's, that's great. Like, we, we want, we want to support you in that.
And anecdotally, just from conversations I've had doing school visits, it seems that there is a breakdown, and we've talked about this before, but there's a breakdown in how often behavior is being reported back to the district, so we can really have a good handle on what's happening and how frequently it's occurring. And what I understand is that there's just a tendency, and it makes complete sense, no administrator wants to highlight that there are behavior problems at their school, right? They want to keep it local and be able to take care of things. So I don't know if there's something that we can, if there's a conversation that we can have with school administrators to say, that's not what's happening in kind of a school district. You won't be, you know, viewed, or, I know, but it's, somehow it's not translating.
It's missing. And the problem we're running, what, what we're going to run into is, is if there's some sort of philosophical difference in the way someone wants to behave or whatever, we're going to end up running into morale problems with our teachers who are dealing with this in the class, and then they're like, please take care of this. And then it's like, they feel like nothing's getting done. So, so again, it's, this is a bigger, probably, conversation again, and continued from what we've done in the past. But I would love to hear from the principals how much time they are spending on.
And actually, along that line, beyond the principals, I, I would love to hear from teachers how much learning loss they think is occurring because of disciplinary issues they're having to address.
If you ask, then anecdotally, it's a lot.
And, and, and because right now, we're focusing on the kids who are perpetrating the problems. And, and that certainly we want to deal with them. But, but the people here who are losing the most are the kids that are in the classrooms that have to clear a classroom and, and miss half of their math class because of some kid who's out of line. And, and, and the learning loss that's associated with that. And, and so I think in a lot of these discussions of discipline, we need to find ways that can minimize, and I would love to hear from teachers, how much of their, how, how much of their time do they think is wasted that they could be teaching and helping students, but it's wasted on discipline issues? I mean, at least the principal's not teaching. I mean, yeah, he's wasting a lot of his time, or not wasting, but utilizing a lot of his time with discipline issues. But a teacher who's utilizing her time to discipline, that's, that's learning loss. And I wonder how much time is lost there.
And I think in a, in a, in a perfect system, and I, you know, in talking with principals and seeing some of their systems that are working well, right? Like, what do we learn from the places where things are working well? They have a pretty strong MTSS, PBIS system. They're actually documenting and collecting all the data on minors and, and majors, so they can look at the trend, and there's systems to do that, Swiss and PBIS rewards. They enter the data, and their teachers do. So they, and, and principals too. So they can see across a school where are those incidents occurring? Is it in particular classrooms? Is it on the playground? Where is it happening? So they can intervene and do something about it. And there's consistency across the school with the teachers, and, and all speaking the same language, holding kids accountable, and principals too. Because the other part of it is like, there is a level, and it's part of your responsibility as a classroom teacher. You know, classroom management is part of that. And, and the, the discipline that happens there before a student is, like, referred, you know, to the office, and I'm not talking about a student who's blowing out, out of control kind of thing. But there's, there's a, a, a lot, and, and what training are we providing teachers? I had a conversation with the principal this week about kind of the toolkits, that some teachers have more tools in their toolkit to manage, and some teachers need some more assistance with how to manage. And so how do you just, but, but I would say, I think it's true, that what we hear is that behavior is more challenging than ever. And we, and, you know, what the root cause of all of that is, you know, people look, took, I mean, it's, you know, we, it's kind of COVID, you know, after COVID, things seem to be more challenging. I don't know.
Yeah, but what I, what I, yeah.
It's going to leave the teacher burnt out. It's going to leave all this stuff. And so I just, I think we just need to continue.
Yeah, we got to work on our systems.
Figure out where we're going.
Because the kids, I mean, we've got to, we've got to serve the kids that come through our doors.
Yep.
I, I mean, so we've got to continue to work through it. And I'm just, I just share that we do have some bright spots of, of places where they've got some effective systems in place.
And are we taking those bright spots and saying, saying to the schools that are struggling, saying, hey, it's working really well here, let's?
Yeah. And we have schools with different demographics, so sometimes some things that work in one school don't necessarily translate and work in another.
Yeah, because we've got three, I mean, just in elementary alone, Sunset View, Sage Crest, Amon Creek, under one percent discipline rate. They, they must have fantastic programs or something in place.
They also have really different demographics than some of our other schools.
Yeah, sure. But, what, I mean, these, these schools can try it, maybe.
No, I, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, it's a factor, kind of all that. And just like you, you were asking about, are there certain schools? And we have demographic differences that are some of those.
And, and we, we just completed our staff survey, and there's some questions in the staff survey that get to those very questions about how they feel about student behavior and those kind of things, too. So we just started looking through some of that. And yeah.
Cool. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Tortured you long enough.
I'll try.
All right. Let, let's see. That ends our reported discussions. We already concluded unfinished business. Next up is new business, community study regarding enrollment.
It's more of a discussion, but I just want to share.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, yeah, I thought there was a slide or something.
There, there is. Just the board saw this slide. I, I had, I sent it to you, because we actually were able to, from the State Board of Education, get some private school enrollment data. And so here's just some trend data for local enrollment of private schools. And I think what the topic is, I just wanted to share this data, because we've shown birth rate data, kindergarten data, homeschool data. When I did the whole big enrollment, what we didn't have is any private school enrollment data. Now we do have some. And so I think that the, the question on the table, or the suggestion that Micah brought forward, is to want to do some kind of community study to find out, you know, why, why people are enrolling in private school or homeschool versus enrolling in our district. And so I think that, you know, I, I asked for it to be on the agenda so the board could discuss it. And if that's the direction that the board wants to go, you would task me with doing that. And I would, you know, we'd need to figure out if we need to do an RFP for that process, or how we then go about securing, and kind of what a reasonable cost might be for that, if that's something that you want done.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any, Micah, you want to just kick it off, highlight what your, so you're, so I guess the question to the board is, are, are we interested in doing a community study as to why people have moved on to private schools, what the issues were, so we can have some talking points or data into?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
What we can do to hopefully get some.
So like, let's see, look at, let's look at the public comments. There's a guy named Dave Baumann. That, like, that guy. I think there's a lot of those guys out there. And that's, I would like to know. And, and you know, like, it's, if you get, I don't know, a hundred kids back, right, or whatever, that's a hundred kids. But it's also there, you know, and there's, there's a process somebody would go through. That guy, there's a process that he's going to go through to send his three kids back to school. And, and in that process, you know, you're going to take step by step, you're a little more comfortable, a little more comfortable, you're going to find out, you're going to, you know, and then, and that trends. So if you've got a hundred kids coming back, you've got five hundred kids potentially, like, I've just, you know, estimated, five hundred kids thinking about it, and five families thinking about it. And then you've got people voting for the levies. And then, you know, it's, it's just like that community thing. So, so it's not just the hundred kids, it's, it's what that hundred kids, that's like the tip of the iceberg, right? And there's a lot that, that, that underneath of that, that when we go to pass levies, why are we, why do we not pass these levies, the lot, two, two levies, and then we finally barely pass the third one? I think it's, it's like this crowd. This is my philosophy, my theory, from just, it's anecdotal, but I want to add some numbers to it to see if it's true. And, and then can we do anything to fix it and pass the next levy, right? That's a big thing. Like, I think about that all the time. Like, what things can we put in place now? What can we do? Pass levy? And it's hard, it's hard to know, and you just don't know, right? It's like, I don't know what that, what the information is. So.
So the question then is, are, is anyone opposed to, I guess ultimately, turn in the, turn, I guess, I don't know the right words for it, but looking into the process of what it would cost and, and how it would go?
No.
I mean, it would be.
It's fine. I want to know.
We'd have to do that first before any.
I, I want to know the cost. I mean, we're looking at the graph here, we're looking probably at somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred kids, oh, four hundred and six hundred, probably just change between two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three. So, and plus or minus, because Calvert Christian seems like a little anomaly there, where it had attendance, then went to zero. Yeah, well, yeah. But, but my point in saying that is, is, so let's say the change is six hundred kids, seven hundred kids, that, that's pretty significant, where if we can capture half of those.
Well, they're not necessarily all from Kemah School District, like.
Oh, that's true. Good point.
Polling from other districts.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a great point. So let's say half of the, or, well, are these, yeah, Pasco's maybe.
I mean, it could be, yeah.
But it's like, that's it. We just don't know. Like, we just don't know.
Yeah.
So let's just, let's just try to know the answer to those things.
Let's see what the cost would be.
Any, okay.
And are we focused only on private schools, or will we reach out to homeschoolers as well? I know that's a little bit difficult to find them, and figure out how to capture that information.
On the homeschool, there's some specific wording in the law that says.
You can't reach out to them. Okay. That's fair.
Yeah.
But I, I would suspect that the homeschool is probably not significantly, it's a gross assumption, but we could potentially assume that the numbers we find here may be similar to the, you know, the.
Not the numbers.
The causes, excuse me, the causes that we find may be similar.
Yeah, let's, let's see what something like that would cost, and you can assign it towards moving forward.
So do you want me to?
We don't know the process. So do we have to do an RFP? Is it something?
Yeah, but I mean, do you, do you want to, do you want that to come back to the board? Do you want me to, like, find some, you know, different options, or? And then come back to the board before we move forward?
Yeah, I think ultimately, we have to know what the, the cost, the cost would be before we say anything.
And the biggest thing for me is whoever we decide, I'd really love to have them come, come here, so we can like, really like, talk about the things that we want them to find out. Come to a board meeting, you know?
Oh, like the survey developers?
Why don't you just tell me, and I tell them?
I guess you could, but I mean.
That's my job.
So put together, so put together what you're thinking, and, and send it, send it to, send it to Dr. Pierce, so she knows what to look for.
Well, I argue that you, you put together what you're thinking, and you bring it to the board, and we agree with the board.
Correct. And then give it to me, and then I'll give it to them.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, do we need, if he sends it in to Dr. Pierce, she can share that with us. And then, and then.
Yeah.
We can say, yeah, that looks like what we're thinking. Let's, let me have, and I don't know if we want to add more time to an agenda, just to discuss a few questions. So start with what you're thinking. We'll add some pieces to it. We'll kick the tires on it.
Okay. Right?
Okay.
So if you can get that to me before the next board meeting.
I already did with that other.
I don't remember there being questions, you sent me the name of the company and that kind of thing.
Yeah, they had a whole proposal and in that proposal there was, I can shut it. Yeah, no problem.
Okay. All right, so next up on our agenda is the next meeting agenda. That includes the preliminary budget 2425, student goal report, growth proficiency targets, artificial intelligence policies, grading.
We may or may not have that ready.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, grading policies and then a recommendation on our financial literacy graduation requirement. Any, if there's any other potential adds, please let me know and we'll work to see where we can add it. And right now it is 9:50, we're going to go into an executive session, a legal issue.
Load up more.
Bronson, how long?
How?
Exec session.
Thirty minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes? What, for 15 minutes? So no, I don't have that quote, no other action will be taken. No other action will be taken. I'll, I'll have a meeting after. All right. Here we go.